Good evening, and welcome to the July 26th meeting of the Glendale City Council. I would just like to announce that we are going to move the successor agency meeting to next week, so we will not be having that meeting right now. We will proceed to the council meeting. Roll call, please.
Next week.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is a flag salute led by Councilmember Garpetian, followed by the invocation.
Thank you.
Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. As we gather here today as individuals committed to the safety and prosperity of our jewel city, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. We are thankful for this day granted to us and for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And, next item?
Agenda for the July 26, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is supposed to on Friday, July 22, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next is presentation and appointments, and at 3:00 a.m. is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 2, 2016.
Thank you. Ms. Spears?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for next week, for the Glendale Housing Authority in the afternoon to commence at 3:00 p.m., we have Director of Community Development. This is selection of an affordable senior housing development team and proposal for housing authority-owned property at Fifth and, Fifth Street and Sonora Avenue in response to the Housing Authority's request for proposals. And, we have, again, in the afternoon, a special meeting of the City Council. Director of Community Development will be discussing the Montrose Vision 2020 Plan. Director of Community Development, this is revised sequel guidelines and code changes. And, lastly, City Manager, this is regarding the legislative update that we bring to you annually. You also mentioned, Madam Mayor, that we will have the special meeting for the Glendale Successor Agency. That too will be in the afternoon. Director of Community Development, agency consideration of 100 WGB hotel owners offered to purchase the agency's interest in the revenue participation obligation of Hilton Hotel. This is located at 100 West Glen Oaks Boulevard. And lastly, in the evening, our council meeting will be canceled due to National Night Out, and we will have information on our website in terms of locations and sites for the National Night Out, and the council will be out in the different neighborhoods. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Looking forward to that. I hope everyone will participate in National Neighborhood Night Out. It's always a fun, fun event, good to meet the neighbors, and for us to come out and meet all of you. Next item, please.
Next item is a proclamation for Korean Comfort Women.
Okay, and I think Chang Lee, are you accepting this, please, with guests? I will read the proclamation, and then you may say a few words and introduce your guests, okay? Whereas during its colonial and wartime occupation of Asia and the Pacific Islands from the 1930s through the duration of World War II, the Japanese Imperial Army commissioned the acquisition of young girls who became known into the world as comfort women. And whereas the comfort women's system of forced military prostitution by the Imperial Army is considered one of the largest cases of human trafficking in the 20th century. And whereas the City of Glendale commends the United States Congress House of Representatives for the passage of Resolution 121 and joins with their recommendations that the government of Japan should educate current and future generations about the horrible crime while following the recommendations of the international community with respect to the comfort women. And whereas the City of Glendale has a longstanding history of recognizing cultural diversity and has been a strong advocate for human rights around the world, this was evident in 2013 when the Glendale City Council voted to approve the Comfort Women Monument in the Glendale Central Park. Since the decision was made, the City of Glendale has continued to support the efforts to secure the rights of those known as comfort women. Now, therefore, I, Paula Devine, Mayor of City of Glendale, proclaim July 30th as Comfort, Korean Comfort Women Day and extend our profound hope that bringing these atrocities to light will serve as a grave reminder to the world that crimes against humanity will not be condoned or tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members and the city staff. It is truly an honor. You know, before the statue was installed in the Central Park, we had designated July 30th with the respect to passage of HR 121, House Resolution 121, July 30th as a Comfort Women Day since 2012. This is the fifth anniversary of a Comfort Women Day, and we really appreciate your efforts on behalf of all the victims of the comfort women that were sex slaves during those era. It was a dark time in our history. And this city is a city that I know that humans' dignity is respected and humans' rights are protected. So I'm truly, truly happy resident and proud Glendalean to be here. With me today, we have President Oh from Korea Women's International Network and President Amethyst Lee from Samyel Women's Association. We have Professor Monica Jung from Dongdok University, who puts this art exhibit on every year, year after year. So this year, you know, we normally have it in Central Library, but this year, Central Library is going through renovation, so we had to move it to Koreatown. But next year, we'll be back in the Central Library and hope to continue to, you know, send the right message, the peaceful message, and educate those people that who are not familiar with this atrocity that was committed back in World War II. So again, thank you very much, and it's an honor.
I'm Yosay.
Thank you very much.
I'll come down and present the commendation proclamation, and if any of my fellow council members would like to say a few words while I'm doing that. Ms. Robert Friedman?
Yes, I'm just very proud of the City of Glendale for being the place that we have the Comfort Women statue, which I think everyone in California can be proud of and visit. And it's done a lot to keep the memory of what happened alive and to educate the American public about what happened to those women. And of course, it serves as a ongoing reminder about the fate of innocent people, particularly women and girls, in times of war and conflict, and that's something that always bears a remembering. So thank all of you for having brought this to the city and for helping keep that monument up clean and with the tributes that I always see there. It's really been a wonderful thing to have in the City of Glendale. I've been very proud to have been a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Casman.
Thank you.
I'm so glad that our city is the only city, one of two in all of the United States, to have a Comfort Women Memorial, and I know it's the only one that commemorates formally the crimes committed against, crime against comfort women in general and Korean comfort women in particular. I remember my trip to Korea fondly and being at the statue in front of the Japanese Embassy as well. And I think, like you said, our city values human rights and human dignity, and therefore, it makes sense that that statue came up, you know, it was erected in the City of Glendale and not somewhere else. So, great to see you. Great to see you, Monica.
Thank you, Casman.
Well, I attended the exhibit that you had last year, Comfort Woman exhibit, and it was very emotional for me. It was touching, it was sad, but yet uplifting because these women survived and they told their story to the entire world. That's why we have a statue here in Glendale. And the statue here is a testament to City of Glendale's commitment to condemn any crime against humanity. Congratulate all of you as well, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Casman.
The statue and our commemoration of Comfort Women Day has brought Glendale international renown, especially the public of Korea, where without fail, every city or hamlet or province that you go to, that I would go to with Chang, and I'm sure that the experience was shared by my colleagues, once they learned that you're from Glendale, they would immediately light up and be so happy to see us because of the bold step that we took in erecting the statue and creating the Comfort Women, Woman Day. In fact, just last weekend, I had friends from Korea that came to visit and wanted to be at the statue with one of the council members who was involved in getting it put up. And they were very proud, and they, they just couldn't take enough pictures and be so happy that such an event was commemorated in a land 5,000 miles away. So, it was a great, great tribute to man's, inhumanity to man. And every, every April when we have our week of remembrance, we're always certain to mention the comfort woman issue. And we're very happy that the Korean community also appreciates the great efforts that we go to. And I must say that it is still a burning issue with some members of the Japanese nationalist community, not so much Japanese-Americans, but those in Japan. They're always, would like to meet with us when they come to visit to discuss removing the statue and so forth. And we have serious discussions with them, frank discussions with them about what that means to us. So, thank you. I'm happy to be here and help you celebrate the commemoration.
Thank you, Casman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's our pleasure. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar, including minutes. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. I believe there was a card submitted to pull items B.
And C.
And C.
Correct. Would council like to pull any other items besides B and C? If not, do I have a motion?
Four B and C is being pulled?
Four B and C are being pulled.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Can you please read into the record, 4B?
4B is Director of Public Works and Interim Director of Community Services and Parks. Regarding proposed Fremont Park renovation project, B1 is motion authorizing City Manager who is designated to execute professional services agreement with David Vols Designs Landscape Architects, Inc. for the preparation of design and construction documents for the Fremont Park renovation project in amount of $874,832 plus 5% contingency of $43,742 for a total not to exceed amount of $918,574.
Thank you. Choa?
Yes, ma'am. This is just the first step forward on the DIF strategy that was previously approved by the council, both as a standalone document by way of the strategic plan as well as part of your budget. So, this is bringing on the consultant to do the next wave of studies that'll pave the way for the major renovation of this phase of Fremont Park.
Okay. Shinook Ramirez, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Before you, before you do the preparations and designs and on this Fremont Park renovation, I would like to share one L.A. County such project that came to fruition in 2012. It is the Music Center Grand Park. It is located in the downtown Los Angeles area. The Grand Park is divided into four blocks extending from Grand Avenue by the Music Center and cascading down to Spring Street right across L.A. City Hall. These four blocks are four small parks within one, between First and Temple Street, and culminate in the Music Center Grand Park. It is a beautiful park. They do maintain and upkeep the four blocks of the park, landscape, trees, shrubberies, gates, tables and chairs, lighting, event preparations, and all non-event and event operations with a staff of 24/7. There's also children's park area as well. The Grand Park opens from 5:30 in the morning to 10:00 p.m. daily. They have their own security outfit and provide their own specialized detailed uniforms and work in unison with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. They also have bike security officers who has a multifunctional purpose, and they, they ride the blocks up and down and also relieve the, the one security officer per block, and they also go to areas where the surveillance cannot see. So that is a difficult job riding their bikes up and down. They're pretty muscular. There are many homeless that go to the park and utilize a female and male bathroom in the block. Block 1 and/or Block 4, which is upstairs by the Music Center. And the Block 4 bathroom has a small waterfall and a Starbucks, very crowded and utilized by the L.A. County Hall of Administration employees. And it is quite nice. It is really, truly a beautiful park. They also have food trucks that are there from Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now, the problem is that you have a lot of vandalism. So if you go to the park and you read or you fall asleep, you will be vandalized, you will be robbed, you will at times be attacked. And you have only one security per block. You need at least four to five people per block, and there's a lot of brawls breaking out in the bathrooms all the time. So you definitely need four to five people per block. It's not fair to have just one person. You have a lot of gang violence. You're also next to the skid row. So there are many things that you have to take into consideration for the protection and safety of the people and the visitors and the tourists and the children. So, there's a lot of weapons, there's a lot of drugs, and it's a high-crime area. And so, it's a breeding ground for gang violence also. So, I recommend that you take these into perspective. And again, the Grand Park downtown L.A. is absolutely stunningly beautiful, and God bless Donald Trump. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, do I have a motion for 4B?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, okay. Petian?
This is, this is for the design of the construction drawings or by?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Garpetian, this is the second and third phase of the project, which includes design development and the construction documents before we go out to bid.
Okay, this is the, the design that we had here for the nine acres of the improvement and everything else?
Yes. So what council saw was the schematic design, the master plan, that the consultant will use to expand on, to develop the construction documents.
And our, our estimated budget for the entire project was $12 million?
Yes, you're correct.
That mean? And how much have we spent on this project so far? I mean, up to this point, the Phase 1 or Phase 2?
I believe about $800,000, $700,000 to $800,000. I don't have the exact figures.
Okay. So 800 and 900 is what, 1.6?
Yes.
For the, and is there another phase of architectural drawings or working drawings that has to be done? Besides this one?
Councilmember Garpetian, the item that you, we are recommending includes the design development and construction documents.
All of it, so?
All of it. There will be one last phase, which is support services during bidding and construction, which is much smaller than this phase.
So this is pretty much about 12% of the total?
Yes.
Something like that. 12% of the total cost of the project. And how much do we have, I mean, when we were talking about DIF funds, I remember that we allocated $4 million or 4.5 for this project?
I believe-
Do we have the, the budget to, to build this project, to start this project?
Yes, for this phase. Keep in mind that elements of this project are not eligible for DIF. That's why we broke it into phases. So that portion that we can move forward with, we will move forward with. That is items that we can do that won't have to be redone later as we get more CIP monies and, and invest them in the park.
Okay, so the rehabbing of the park will be the CIP funds and, and the new items that we're adding that we can use the IAF funds.
Pursuant to, yes, sir.
Right. And, so we're going to construct this in different phases, and the first phase is what we're using the DIF funds for?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and that includes, what does that include?
Councilmember Garpetian includes the children's playground, the lighting, irrigation, basketball court, landscaping, obviously, restrooms, picnic tables, and some natural grass turf.
How about the soccer?
And the, the U, geez, is it U-10 or U-12 soccer field?
Right.
That is DIF as well.
Right.
That part of the DIF?
That is DIF, because that's a new feature.
And what's our ETA on this?
I couldn't tell you. Rubik, I have to defer to you.
If, if council approves the recommendation, we start working on the contract with a consultant, probably in, will be done by September. We issue notice to proceed. The, this phase of the project will take approximately 12 months. So once those documents are all reviewed and approved, then we go out to bid. The bidding and award, they'll probably take another three months, so we should be able to go to construction in about 16 months or so.
All right, thank you.
I have a motion on the item?
Second.
So moved.
All right, oh, motion, yeah, I make the motion.
Second?
Second. Roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. And, item 4C, please.
We foresee a chief of police regarding recommendation to destroy certain police department records, documents, and papers. See one as resolution to authorize destruction of certain records, documents, and papers.
Shinook Ramirez, shall we just let her?
Thank you again. Ladies and gentlemen, to the Chief of Police, when you say you recommending to destroy certain police department records, documents, and papers, it doesn't indicate what time, what dates, and for what offenses. I'm just curious, what dates or how far back do these records go back? And if you are going to destroy them, can you compare as to back then to today? Today, we have a high crime rate, especially gang violence, and a lot of the crime has gone up. It's astronomical. So what did you, Glendale, utilize to combat crimes or quell crimes back then as compared to now? What strategies? What kinds of surveillances or what types of individuals did you have on the beat as back then as compared to now? Because we have a bad crime rate today. It is dangerous. Glendale is still a pretty much safe haven right now. But go outside of the Glendale borders, you will see crime everywhere. And you can also tell crime is high, starting to get high in Glendale. Go to the emergency rooms in Glendale hospitals, you can always tell by the shootings that come into the Glendale emergency rooms. That's how you can also tell that crime is going up in Glendale. But I just, I'm just curious, compare that as to from back then to today. Chief Beck, God bless Chief Beck, he is in a bit of a pickle because he did not utilize the proper techniques and strategies to combat crimes. I told Chief Beck many years ago, stop playing the race card game.
Ms. Ramirez, can you stick to the item?
Yes. And again, all I'm saying is, focus on crimes. How can we curb the crimes? Go back to those records. What worked then because it isn't working now. So, may it help us because we need every bit of information, whether it's just in Glendale, to pass it on all the way to Chief Bratton. It'll help us because we are all American citizens. We need help. God bless America and Donald Trump.
Anything? Mr. Do I have a motion?
Air motion?
Do you have a question? Or do you want to re, do you want to?
I would just say that the, the destruction of documents, we purge all the files that we have according to strict standards and law, and the documents that are being destroyed are not documents that relate to, for example, sex registrants, arsonists, very significant offenders. This is just part of the record-keeping of the police department. Our Commander Goldman, I believe, is here in the back if you have specific questions about it, but this is a pretty routine thing. Glendale remains one of the top 10 safest mid-sized cities in the, in the United States, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Just very quickly.
Ms. Friedman?
It's, you still have time to catch what I think is one of the most unknown and wonderful things that the City of Glendale is doing this summer, and that's the free concerts in the parks. Grand Park on Friday nights and Verdugo Park on Wednesday nights. They're well-attended, but not overcrowded, surprisingly, considering the caliber of musicians. You can have a picnic, you can bring the kids. It's really a great time, and it's all for free. So, hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Sinanian? Next, I wanted to just mention the same thing because I went this past weekend to the Johnny Cash look-alike Cat, Cash Cats. It was excellent. Next week, this Friday, they're having Celtic singers, so you might want to catch that one. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, if, next item listed here is community event announcements. This, there's a three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements. Also, there's a portion for individuals who have submitted an orange card who wish to speak for three minutes on any item not agendized for going five minutes at the conclusion of the meeting.
Goodness, okay. First, let's have for community announcements. Narine? Garpetian? Garpetian? Three minutes.
Good evening, dear Madam Mayor, City Council members and city staff. My name is Narine Carbertian, and I came here with my friends, almost 30 people, Armenian-American citizens living in Glendale and surrounding area. I myself live here in Glendale, like, in, in more than 16 years, and Glendale has been a safe heaven for all of us. Thanks a lot for everything we've got. I'm very proud and happy being American citizen, and, but I'm, but I wouldn't come to United States to live if not the criminal and corrupted government of Armenia destroying my motherland for more than 20 years. And now, I'm concerned very much for Armenia. Since just recently, a week ago, July 17, 2016, an armed group of 25 freedom fighters, loved and respected very much by local Armenian people, were forced to stand up and take a heroic step by taking control of one of police stations in capital city Yerevan in Armenia. They took eight police officers as hostages and voluntarily released them after just five days. So, what they demand, what is the purpose? Impeachment of President Sarkhsarqzan, releasing 17, more than 17 political prisoners, and creating a new temporary government chosen by the people of Armenia. As a result, 20,000 people are on streets now supporting those 25 patriots, four of which were attacked by police yesterday, and now they arrested from hospital. They are patriots saving and saving our country. They are not terrorists, as Armenian and Russian presidents and their news stations report. They are patriots from the criminal, and they're saving the country from the criminal and hijacked government. If they are terrorists, then the all 23, 24,000 protesters now on the street tonight, on the streets of Armenia- on the streets of Armenia, they are terrorists too. A whole country can't be labeled as terrorist. They just fight for their simple human and constitutional rights. And our Glendale is a sister city with two cities of that country, Gomri and Gapan. Here, I'm asking from you to stand up with them and us Armenian-Americans in Glendale and reaffirm democracy for all in the world, including Armenia. As an honor to our sister city Gomri, I must say that their police department with some other regions refused to go to Yerevan to support President Serge Sarkisian, saying that they not going to fight against their own people. There are many videos and images on Facebook and YouTube and everything, everyone can take a look to see. Madam Mayor, city council members, and city staff, please stand up against this violence and aggression. Make your voices and our voices also to be heard, that corrupted and criminal regime in any way, in everywhere, is not acceptable by us, by you and by us, and you can help our sister cities in Armenia. Thanks a lot for your efforts for democracy and justice.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Christine Hovanessian?
Hello, my name is Christine Hovanessian, and I'm here on behalf of almost 30 people sitting in this room today and the majority of Armenians in Glendale to bring forth some points for your consideration. We are all Armenian-American citizens in this beautiful city, county, state, and nation. We only dream that one day our families in France can have the true democratic rights as we do in our motherland Armenia. We know that you are all advocates for human rights. We are here tonight to ask you to be an advocate for human rights in Armenia with your important voices. You are the role model for Armenia that has yet to rise out of dictatorship and communism. You can influence the leadership to take roads towards democracy and end corruption. You have graciously accepted two sister cities in Armenia, Gomri and Gapan, and thus the welfare of the citizens of those cities are a responsibility you carry. So you must lead and speak up, since within your agreements, three of you are obligated to share problems and solutions to the daily city activities. What we are asking of you tonight is to stand with us and reaffirm the tenets of democracy for all in the world, including Armenia, to speak up and let it be known that corruption in any format is not acceptable, and that you and the citizens in this community and Armenia cannot be fooled. Offer your expertise to the government, who cannot and should not be leading with options to support them on how to step down and out of their seats in the government. Give them a lesson on election fraud, because the top leadership, including President Serge Sarkisian, was never elected by the people. Thus, it cannot serve the people, especially that he is a drug-addicted person and a simple blood test would eliminate him from being president. Help us give the message to the council here in Glendale that cheating, lying, stealing, curtailing human rights will not be tolerated, and that they are an embarrassment to our Armenian-American community here in Glendale. Speak up against holding peaceful demonstrators. Speak up against police brutality. Speak up against jailing oppositional leaders. Different views are a part of a true democracy. So I ask of you to lend a helping hand and not stay indifferent. Thank you for your time and attention, for giving us a platform to express our frustrations in a peaceful manner, for being a true model of democracy and listening to your citizens. We are truly grateful for your time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. As you just heard from two speakers, Armenia is going through very, very difficult times these few days. And of course, nothing happens on the spur of the moment. These activities were developing in time as a result of rigged elections and a leader, president of Armenia, who was not fairly elected by the people. He is not behaving like a president of a country. He is basically starving people, especially these folks who have tried to convey a message of liberty and fairness and justice for all citizens. City of Glendale cannot be sisters with leaders of countries that are corrupt, that are thieves, they steal, and who do not uphold the democratic values of our country. We have to respect only those who do carry and who do provide human rights to the people of their own countries. Therefore, it is an embarrassment to all of us here in the United States to witness what is going on in Armenia today. They are starving these folks who have tried to convey a message of justice. Basically, they turn off their electricity, they basically—they have police officers surrounding these folks, and there's police brutality everywhere. Thousands of people are in jail, they're beaten up, they force them to kiss the shoes of the police officers. Human rights violations go beyond words. What is going on—I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to take your opportunity, your positions, your voices, and make a phone call to the country's leadership in Armenia and convey your absolute anger and concern that we cannot be sister cities with leadership of a country that is so dictatorial, that is so violent, and is not upholding the democratic values of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Samak Morhalian? Followed by Mike Mulhill?
Madam Mayor, good evening, counselor. My name is Saqmi Kalyan. In 1995, I've been granted political asylum here in California. 21 years later, we are in 2016. Unfortunately, nothing changed in my motherland, and it turns worst. The government trying to turn Armenia into the bloody hell, just like it happened in Syria. We need your support, your support, that you can send your hospitality here, the Armenian Embassy right here in Glendale. It's been seven consecutive days, we've been marching there, trying to send our voices to the government through the embassy. We've been ignored by the embassy, we've been ignored by the press, we've been ignored by the TV. That's why we are here, to send our message. We need your support. We don't want to see another political prisoners and a people in fear of their life flee the country, just like we did, and it's been going on for the last 25 years. This should be stopped. People deserve to have a freedom of speech and rights, to have a decent life. That's all I have to say, and I'm demanding you guys, make your statement and send it to the embassy, which is right here at the corner of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you want to comment? Anyone want to comment? I just want to say that I appreciate all of you staying for this long, because I know you've been here since at least before 6 o'clock, so I can feel how passionate you are about what you are saying. I don't know if any of my other council members would like to before—
I'll comment.
—I see Mike Mulhill.
No. Needless to say, I've been following what's been happening in Armenia over the last, what is it now, 10 days, nine days since the 17th? Now, I'm very troubled by it. I just came back from Armenia about two weeks ago. So to say that this was a surprise to me would be a lie. But, you know, I can make statements and express myself about how I feel about, you know, what's happening in Armenia, but why do that when I've done that on numerous occasions throughout the years? There isn't a TV station in Armenia, there isn't a newspaper that I haven't given interviews to every time I visit Armenia, which is every year, in which I have not raised my concerns about the lack of democracy, about the lack of transparency, about the corruption, about the migration. I've spoken about these issues over and over and over, and I did again this June when I was there. So this is very dear to my heart. It hurts when it's happening, and it's very sad. Obviously, democracy is the highest value that needs to be fostered and protected in Armenia, and it's not, unfortunately. And I'll tell you that I've personally met with the Nahakur Taran board, everyone, with Varujan, with Jiraid, with all of them. I know these guys personally. So I'm very saddened by what's happening. I understand that there was a police storm, the building today, and it's not clear how many casualties there are. So I'm just hoping this comes to an end and the country goes back on a democratic path and its people are treated fairly.
Counselwoman Najarian?
I appreciate the speakers coming forward, and I hope that you realize that although our hearts may be with you, there's really very limited action that the city of Glendale council can take. This is truly dealing with foreign affairs as well as the internal affairs of Armenia. But I can assure you that during my most recent visit to Armenia, which was last July, about a year ago, that I did meet with the president. And during that time, if you recall, the Electric Armenia protests were just underway. It was the day after they had used some forceful means to try and disperse the crowd. And I told the president, although I'm hesitant to reveal everything that our discussion was about, but I just gave him some anecdotal evidence about the value of an open democracy, where residents from the public can come and criticize their leaders. And in a sense, I told the president that that makes your government stronger. And I told him that every week, we sit here at city council, and we are condemned by certain members of the public, we're accused of being corrupt, of being unfair, of being unlawful, of being criminals. But it's through those expressions of opinion that ideas are exchanged and emotions can be released. I also spoke to the mayor of Yerevan, to Daron Markarian, with whom I'm very close, and expressed the same thing, that heavy-handed means of controlling and trying to control and eradicate public opinion is a way of backfiring. And to the extent that I, as an individual, could express that, these are the elements of democracy that we all believe in. It's not something special that the city of Glendale has. It's just our system here in the United States. I didn't feel that it was my point, my position to point out corruption, because we have corruption in the United States. It wasn't my place to point out that some elections are rigged. We've heard about how some elections can be rigged just recently during the Democratic National Convention. But in terms of human rights and being fair with the people, I expressed my opinions. I will continue to do so. I know that all of us, when we travel, express those same sentiments to anyone who will listen. The important thing is that we hope and pray that this—that the message that the gentleman wanted to bring out about their displeasure with the way the government's being run is being resolved in a peaceful manner, and that any discourse be done without violence and with open ears and open minds by everyone.
Counselwoman Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'd like to thank all of you for coming over here as well. I just came back from Armenia to—the reason to our travel was christening of my daughter, my last, you know, my third daughter. We had two that were baptized in Armenia in the mother church, and it was our wish and hope to do the same for our third child. And two days after we come back, this incident happened, which is very unfortunate. I also met with the mayor of Yerevan and also the Ministry of Diaspora in Armenia, and we express our feelings every time about the democracy, about the human rights. And there is so much we can do from here, from this dias, to change anything in Armenia. But my hope is that this will be, and peacefully, because when you look at—when you watch these videos on YouTube and you look at the faces of the soldiers or the police officers who are standing against their people, you can feel the pain. So we just hope that this will—this will—they don't want to be there, there's so much going on. And these things will take time. Democracy doesn't come easy, it doesn't come—it just—it will take time. I know 20 years is a long time, but it's not a long time. Armenia is a new country. It's been, you know, 25 years since its independence. And we do what we can do, we share your pain and your feelings, but there is so much we can do from this dias to change anything in the government of Armenia. People in Armenia will decide. People always decide. The middle class, the average working class will decide what has to happen in Armenia. And if the—sorry?
More people of your seat can come and stand with us there.
Please, no, no—
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Enter.
So that's all I have to say, Madam Mayor, and we share your pain and feelings. That's all I have to say at this time.
I just want to add a little thing about the issue of the sister cities. Yes, we are sister cities with two cities in Armenia. And Gomri is relatively new, it's about two years old, and, you know, Gomri is probably the most hardly—the most severely impacted city in Armenia because of not only the economic collapse, but also the earthquake. So the idea with becoming sister cities with Gomri was to create some kind of a positive relationship, help them out in that sense. So that relationship is very new, it's yet to be tested. In terms of Gapan, if you've noticed the last 12 years that sister city relationship was created, there's been nothing happening in the last five years, nothing. That relationship is very weak right now. And I'll tell you frankly, two years ago, when Armenia's prime minister asked to meet with me, when we met, I told him, I said, "So long as Lisca is the governor of Sunik, I can't convince the people of Glendale to support this relationship in a robust manner." And that's true. So long as people like Surik Kachatran are ruling in that area, I can't see it happening.
So I think the takeaway here is the fact that you have council members here that really care and hope for a safe resolution to this issue. But we do what we can do, and we—whenever we are in Armenia, we try to contact or be in touch with, as you can hear, the elected officials there. But again, we do what we can do, and our hearts are with you, and our prayers, hope that this gets resolved soon. I'm so sorry. Thank you. Is Mike Mulhill here next? Thank you. Okay. Then we have one more announcement from Sheri Stubbs.
I'm here tonight to talk about the entry markers for North Glendale and to affirm support for them. First, I must reiterate the points contained in the rebuttal to the petition which was sent to you. In addition, at our Crescent Valley Community Association meeting on June 23, a gentleman insisted that the markers only cover a narrow 1.5 miles between Pennsylvania and Lowell. He said that Glendale was only downtown, where the Americana is. Of course, neither of those statements is true. Is sentiment expressed by the comments and the petition signers, of which you have all seen, I think? Yes, of course it is. However, because the online petition is so factually wrong, the truth cannot be told. The petition is an inaccurate, incorrect, and erroneous online document put out to the public to sign as truth and fact. Because of those fallacies, the petition and the signatures are, in effect, nullified. As a member of the Committee on the Entry Marker Project and Selection, I can say that we are very pleased with the design. It incorporates all the elements reflecting the character of far north Glendale. It is smart, it is sleek, stylish, and classic, yet also rustic. It is smart, it is sleek, stylish, and classic, yet also rustic, with the stone and rock elements included. The entry markers are in keeping with the implementation of the North Glendale Community Plan and will be a welcome, attractive, and appealing addition to Foothill Boulevard and the surrounding community. As noted in the rebuttal, we are open to the wording for the entry markers. However, whatever the decision is on the wording, to protect the integrity of the North Glendale Community Plan, we must have the project proceed. Have any of you seen the design? Okay, I brought copies in case you haven't. So, I know you had heard things, and we wanted to let you know that we support the design and the markers.
Can you give it to the city clerk?
Oh, the design?
Yes.
And thank you for your positive words. Appreciate that. That concludes the comments, oral comments. Next item, please.
Madam Mayor, with your permission, we do have a hearing for weed abatement.
Did you want to do that now? I was going to take it after the ordinance, but if it's on, we can do it now, that's fine.
Nine A is a fire chief regarding weed abatement charges for 2015, 2016. A1 is a resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
Report, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is a public hearing, so if you'd like to open that first, and we'll go forward.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This...
We'll open the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. This is the annual hearing for the levying of charges, the confirmation of the charges for weed abatement. Chief Fish and Fire Department personnel, including Mr. Nichols, is here with us, as well as members and representatives from the department, County Department of Agriculture. Each year, of the 629 parcels that receive notices by way of inspection from the county for weed abatement, we send those out. And generally speaking, more than 95% of those property owners clear the weeds to the amount required by law, usually a very small percentage, in this case, I believe it's like 26 of the 629 properties, have the charges levied against them. This is the public hearing to confirm those charges. I have not been made aware of any residents who wish to contest their charges, but if they are, as I mentioned, the County Department of Agriculture folks are here. If you have any questions, Madam Mayor, we can address those. If not, you can proceed with the public hearing, and we'll go forward.
Well, I have no cards, so there will be no speakers on this. I'll open it to Councilmember Najarian.
So, I have a question. Now, these charges, I understand what they're for. These are not a fine. The actual charges imposed must reflect the actual cost of the clearance.
That is correct, sir. When you look at, that's why you see a range, 12 of the parcels were charged between $41 and $750, $750 to $1,500, and so on, all reflecting generally the topography and the condition of the property. It isn't just one flat amount over everybody, except for the inspection fee.
And the work is done... So, the way it goes is that the local fire department inspects the property, issues a notice for abatement by a certain date. If it's not done, then the county...
They come back to you to confirm the role of the properties that are in violation. The work gets done, the confirmation of charges gets scheduled, and that's what we're doing tonight.
And it's a lot cheaper to hire the GYA, or even a private, independent gardening service or landscaping service to handle this.
I would...
That's why I just wonder, because sometimes, I was, I'll be honest, I was hit with one of these one year, and it was extremely higher than what a private company charged.
You're going to pay the fully burdened rate, just as we would charge. That's what the county will charge, including their overhead, to whatever degree the county board of supervisors would allow. Generally speaking, in my experience, the properties that you'll see here are owned by real estate trusts, are owned by folks, out-of-town landlords, most of the time, not all the time, but most of the time. And so, they would just pay that bill as part of their property taxes if they have a management company operating their investments.
So, I imagine the $41 is an inspection fee of some sort. But for those other folks, it is so much cheaper to be on it in time and get it taken care of at your own pace than have the county crew come in and send you a nice bill, which gets added to your property tax. It's not like you can avoid the bill, so...
That's true.
So, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Close the public hearing, then, and there's no other discussion. Is there a motion for this item? Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, so the next item, then, will be the adoption...
Adoption of ordinances, yes. 7A is amending Title VIII of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 by adding Chapter 8.80 to define blighted, deteriorated, or deteriorating areas relating to the city's use of federal community development block grant funds for city code enforcement activities. This was introduced by Councilmember Najarian on July 19, 2016.
Okay, I have two cards. Rondi Warner?
Hello, I'm Rondi Warner, President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association, and I've lived in Glendale for over 30 years. We appreciate city staff's efforts to address the lack of code enforcement through the community block grant program funds. We hope that this money will enable neighborhood services to respond to code violations throughout the city. My only concern is the very broad definition of blight as 25% or more substandard properties in an area. Given that much of Adams Hill is built on lots of substandard size, we hope that this definition does not unduly impact the property rights of residents in these areas. The vast majority of our homeowners maintain their homes in excellent condition and would be very offended to hear that their homes could be defined as blighted. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond?
I don't think I need to say anything more. I think Rondi had what we had.
Rochelle, response to...
Yeah, all this is, is changing the definition to match HUD's definition. We formerly had used CDBG dollars to do code enforcement in the census tracts. Council has directed that we no longer use CDBG dollars for that purpose. However, because HUD looks backwards over a period of time when they do their audits, it is incumbent on us to have the same definition of blight. With respect to irregular or oddly shaped lots, while that has been a definition of blight in California Health and Safety Code language, what we are looking for here is the physical deterioration of property. That's what HUD has been concerned with, and at this point, it's actually a little bit funny that we're doing this even though we no longer use those CDBG dollars for code enforcement, which, on the plus side, allows our code enforcement officers to operate throughout the city versus strictly in the census tract areas. So, appreciate the concerns, this won't have any impact on that.
No effect.
We're looking for broken windows at the end of the day.
All righty, thank you, thank you. Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
I'll move the item.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Action items, 8A is Director of Community Development regarding Planning Workshop Number Three Regarding South Glendale Community Plan. 8A1 is a motion to provide direction staff. 8A2 is a resolution of appropriation from undesignated general fund balancing amount of $12,000 for public outreach efforts.
Thank you. And Mr. Rochelle?
Yes, ma'am. My best impersonation of both Alan Loomis and Laura Stotler. This is the third installment of the Council's Work Boot Series, the Council Enrichment, Edification, Education series that we do every month, albeit this time we stretch it out over three different meetings, to acquaint you with what will become the South Glendale Community Plan and the planning process itself. So, as you know, we have had a couple of different sessions, back-to-back, in terms of the weeks, the 12th, the 9th, and wherein we focused on the kind of high level of what a community plan is and what it isn't. We looked at the residential areas that dominate Glendale's land use, and the idea was that in the third session, we would also talk about transit, mobility, and transportation connectivity, all with the hope and expectation that we would come before you in August, I believe on the 16th, with what amounts to a capstone project. Here are all of the things that we've talked about over these Work Boot Sessions. These are ideas that you've given us, that the public, by attending those meetings and speaking at those meetings, has given us, and that really is a milestone in the process regarding South Glendale Community Plan. From that point, we would be going forward with the construction of the plan and the environmental impact report that's required from such a general plan-level document. We would then come back to you presumably late September, October, to actually circulate, to get your approval in circulating the EIR. And that EIR will feature a series of scenarios, and kind of showing, cutting straight to the punchline, that the scenario A will be a very high line of what could possibly be done, given all of the constraints in the South Glendale Community Planning area. And then underneath that scenario A pursuant to the way that we do SEQA, is that we would have a series of other scenarios that have a lesser impact from what that high-line scenario is. So, what you will see today, or tonight, rather, is just this ongoing discussion, kind of recapping where we've been and looking to this notion of transit infrastructure, because ultimately, when we talk about the strengths of South Glendale, one of the primary strengths is location, location, and location. It is centrally located for everything in this community and in this subregion, and it is connected by, at this point, surface transportation, bus transportation. And so, we want to paint a picture of what could be in the future, get your attitudes about that, listen to the public, and then we'll go forward. So...
And I just wanted to add to that, by May, that this is, was normally scheduled for 10:00 AM in the morning, and we rescheduled it. Councilmember Sinanian suggested that we do it this evening to give residents of the South Glendale area an opportunity to come to council in the evening and express your opinions and your concerns about this plan. So, this is for all of you.
All righty, so, South Glendale Community Planning Area is... You're going to have to help me out there, yes. You can see it outlined in that what appears to be gray or blue there, south of the 134 freeway, as was mentioned already by Sheri Stubbs. We spent a good deal of time on the North Glendale Community Planning Area that was done and adopted in 2011. That area really hadn't received a great deal of study in the past, and so, that public outreach process, decision-making process, was different than the process we have here in South Glendale Community Planning Area, where over the last 30 years, we've done about 30 different plans. They generally can be summarized in this slide here. And what you're seeing on the left is our zoning map of South Glendale. Along the midsection, the belt of that picture is the 134 freeway in white. And what you see in the various shades of, let's call it, orange, you have a bunch of... Thank you very much. Can you do that? You have primarily residential areas that are here in these locations that are bordering what are effectively transit corridors, Central, Brand, or the Chevy Chase that goes up this way. You have Verdugo on the other side, east-west corridors. You have Colorado here, and Broadway up here, and San Fernando Road running along the southwest. So, you do, again, have this area that is central in location, that lends itself to being a place that is dynamic, diverse, and quite vibrant. The other half of the story, that I think you spent the first couple of sessions really accepting and wrestling with, some more grudgingly than others, is the fact that the story of South Glendale has really been written in many ways, as you see, all these various colors here denote the time period in which the properties that exist in these neighborhoods were developed. And so, what you saw is a zoning program that predated a general plan program, and the zoning actually was very permissive. A lot of these areas were zoned R4, and at some point in the 1960s and 70s in particular, a lot of homeowners or property owners realized that they were sitting on a significant deal of value, because they could, in fact, put multifamily improvements on what had been developed as single-family homes. And through the 1970s and into the 1980s, you saw this transformation in Central and South Glendale take place. By 1986, the City Council at that time takes action after recognizing that the character of these neighborhoods has changed dramatically. And in 1986, then again, in the early 90s, I believe, 1990 or '91, downzonings are put in place. And the downzoning is two sides of the same coin. On the one side, by bringing the allowable development potential of a property down, you are setting a new baseline for what can happen on that property going forward. That actually is beneficial to the standpoint that you won't see anything more than what that ceiling allows. On the flip side, however, you also are basically setting that property, as it currently exists or as it exists in that contemporary time, you're almost ensuring that it likely will not redevelop, because you could never exceed the density that is there on that property. And so, depending, and where you stand depends on where you sit. And so, what you see here are a number of properties that were developed in that 1960s and 70s period of time, that likely are not going to redevelop, because there is no economic incentive outside of the city, outside of the public incentive, to do that. And as you heard earlier in your Housing Authority meeting today, doing housing, be at affordable or market rate, especially when you have to assemble properties, as we're doing on LOMIDA for the Habitat for Humanity project, that is very, very expensive. Left to itself, the private sector oftentimes will not take on those projects, hence redevelopment, hence the low-mot income program that Glendale was able to utilize so dramatically over the last 30 years until the state killed redevelopment. The other aspect of this discussion, you don't see it as well here, but you certainly get the sense of it on the slide to your right in terms of that historic development, are those remaining lots. Again, to the extent that there was a downzoning, we have what are referred to as widows and orphans, those orphaned lots that are effectively a singular improvement, a single-family home, for example, amid a block full of multifamily homes, and trying to understand, what do you do with that remaining property? How do you achieve a higher and better use for the benefit of the community? Can you achieve a higher and better use for the benefit of the community? What do you do when properties are deemed to be historic, as a lot of this area is built out in the post-war environment? So, all of those discussions are things that you had some debate and dialogue about, and that we are culling through all of that information and will be part of the South Glendale Community Plan and EIR as we approach the community. What you see here is what some of that homework was for the City Council. You look at all of the very distinct neighborhoods that we have, from Vineyard up in the upper-left-hand corner, you have Mariposa over here on the east side, Somerset, Adams Hill, you have the Pacific Edison area, Moore Park to the west underneath Vineyard, and then, of course, you have Tropico, historic Tropico. Many of these areas have, I wouldn't want to call them specific plans, that implies a certain type of plan, but they have studies that have been done on them, that, again, we are trying to unify in one cohesive vision vis-à-vis the South Glendale Community Plan. And what we had asked the Council to do, and what we are going to confirm on the 16th of August, is to look at all of these individual planning areas and apply to them this type of thinking. And you think back to what we did in North Glendale Community Plan, are we going to conserve areas? That probably is more appropriate for West Glendale. When we talk about Riverwalk, there aren't the natural open spaces in the South Glendale Community Planning Area. So, we really start to focus on maintaining, enhancing, and transforming. And as I mentioned earlier, to the extent that much of what Glendale is in Central and South neighborhoods is already established, and absent the ability to transform those areas, if only because of financing, we are looking at maintaining what we have and improving it in that way, and thus enhancing those neighborhoods where it makes the most sense. There probably is, if there is one opportunity for transformation, it is in the Tropico Transit-Orient Development Neighborhood, at the very southern anchor, at the south anchor of the city, that where LA and Glendale meet and where the train station is, we have some opportunity there. But for the most part, we're talking about those two middle categories, enhancing and maintaining. What we are asking for as well is this discussion of policy and vision. What is the community's vision? What are the policies that can help us get there? So, to the extent that we're looking for stability in these residential neighborhoods, far from writing these neighborhoods off because of the lack of timely decision generations ago, we actually have the ability, we believe, through strategic investments, of actually making places that are sustainable for the long term. So, we can look at things, TDR, the Transfer of Development Rights, was, interestingly, perhaps even surprisingly, something that garnered some degree of... perhaps even surprisingly, something that garnered some degree of traction among council and community members, as a means of finding those holdover, those orphaned, especially historic lots, and finding a way to keep those properties intact, but still recognizing that there is development pressure that can then be transferred to areas that are more suitable. We took stock of what the challenges for this area were, in terms of parking and the lack of open space, and understanding that the city of Glendale, through all of our different budgetary or categorical budgets, make investments each year into these neighborhoods, and most notably, in the development impact fee discussion that we had earlier just tonight, making multimillion-dollar investments in these neighborhoods, but still recognizing that there's an opportunity, because of the walkability of many of these neighborhoods, to employ assessment districts, as a means of giving ownership to what the improvements are and customizing them to the neighbors that live there. When we talk about all done by voter approval and property owner assessment, not something that the city council could unilaterally levy. And then this discussion that you had a great deal of debate about earlier today, affordable housing. And this discussion, again, where you stand depends on where you sit, because folks have argued, even from the dais, that we need to diversify the location of affordable housing, understanding that there is affordable housing, meaning that it is affordable to working-class families and households, and then there is the affordable housing, capital A, capital H, that the city of Glendale undertakes by way of our programs and policies that we have in place, everything from the SB 1818 laws, through the remaining funds we have from low mod income budgets, as well as the Section 8 program. So understanding, do we put that housing where it is most, where you put those dollars where it's most cost-effective, or do we find other areas where it is still cost-effective, but also spreads the investment throughout the community? And you did, or you made steps towards doing that today, this afternoon, in discussing an affordable housing development in Northwest Glendale. So to the extent that there are opportunities, and that the council is looking at this policy issue from all different angles, very, very important. The Historic Resources Survey is something that came across very, very clear, that we will move forward with as posthaste with the process, with the project that we're talking about. As you know, we have funding for the commercial survey. It'll just be a function of tying that together with the overall community survey. But the discussion of green streets, green trees, and walkable small villages along these districts, along these major thoroughfares and corridors, is what will hold the community together for the long term. We talked a great deal about parking. As I mentioned, parking is a shortage, because many of these properties, as they developed in the 60s and 70s, did not have parking standards, certainly as we do today, and there is an over-concentration of parking. What is the best way to do that? The council disagreed and debated, and will have to come to some resolution as we go forward. Centralized parking structures that serve perhaps businesses on major corridors, as well as in the evening residence in these neighborhoods, possibly even finding ways to incorporate open space on the roofs of such parking structures. Who pays for these parking structures? Does it give us an opportunity to cut into these very long blocks that you see in the Somerset neighborhoods in particular, in increasing circulation, slowing cars down, and allowing, again, walkability of these streets? Looking at West Broadway as a real opportunity with the IMU, the Industrial Mixed Use District, is there a way to, on a street where the thoroughfare is wide, where we do have transit, where does it make sense for us to make additional investments and allow the council, by way of setting policy, to reestablish what the density and the zoning could be in those areas? Creative open space is critically important for us. I think the council had a good deal of discussion, both at the sessions, and what I have heard from you individually, both in the context of South Glendale Community Plan, as well as we looked at the development impact fee discussion, how do we put those fine touches on the different projects we do to give a little bit of customization, personalization, such that you'll see in the Adams, or in the Maple Park shade structures, as an example? Those are important to you, and thus, we understand that, so they will be important to us, and I can't imagine the community having much trouble at all with that. There was a discussion about Adams Hill and open space there. We will continue to study that. And as I mentioned, traffic calming, and this notion of walking and biking being something that most Glendaleans would like to see in these areas. So again, today, that gets us up to speed for tonight. The corridors, corridors, and gateways. You looked early on at what the transit hubs were, what the main thoroughfares were. When you look at Central, Brand, Chevy Chase, as it heads north after going east, after entering the city limits, you have the bisected area of San Fernando heading to Northwest Glendale from the south, and certainly trying to understand what best happens in those commercial districts that lend themselves to investment, but for a number of different reasons, just haven't realized it over time. So we look at this notion of villages. When you look at South Glendale, north of Los Feliz, south of Colorado, many different opportunities with a strategic investment to create plazas, to create interesting spaces that will be good for the businesses, be good for the neighbors who like to walk those streets, whereas today, there isn't much to walk along. We do have some vibrant businesses and restaurants along that street, but the streetscape itself is quite lacking. When you look at East Colorado, where we installed a tremendously successful, for the time, facelift, and that's all it was, though, of public infrastructure, we really didn't do much by way of placemaking and giving people places to congregate. What we heard from the community was, we should have places where the residents that live in these dense neighborhoods, in some cases, over-dense neighborhoods, should be able to congregate in a public space and not have to shoot the breeze in a commercial parking lot. This is something that was important. It does build community, because you have people coming together to enjoy one another. That was important to you. And we look at West Broadway, we look at East Colorado, some aspects of East Broadway, certainly South Glendale, to the extent that the mixed-use neighborhoods on San Fernando lend themselves. I think the takeaway, and Chevy Chase as well, again, the takeaway is that these are areas where we have infrastructure. We have wide streets, we have perhaps underdeveloped, singular properties that could be combined with other properties to get a higher and better use, all while protecting and preserving that which has already been developed in the mid-block areas of these neighborhoods. We heard a great deal about Adams Square and Adams Hill. To the extent Adams Hill is the anomaly, it is a collection of primarily single-family homes that sits on the hill, but Adams Square really has the opportunity to be so much more, but it's a question of building that critical mass for the type of retail that everybody can enjoy, and that's something that we will look towards. The mixed-use on corridor is critically important, because where you put people, they'll have disposable income, presumably depending on the type of unit you put in place, to patronize those businesses in the immediate vicinity. That gets people out of cars, that gets people walking, that gets people having to look up off their cellphone and actually speak to other folks, so we hope, if they're not playing Pokemon Go. The assessment districts, we've talked about a little bit, but that is a tool that, again, cuts both ways. Everything we have been discussing by way of these last two sessions is kind of two sides to the same coin. There are folks who will tell you, why should we do an assessment district? Don't my property tax dollars and sales tax dollars cover that already? They cover a level of maintenance and investment that exists, such as what you have today, with the occasional once-a-generation investment that will cause, that's caused for an improvement, a major physical improvement in a neighborhood. But to the extent that we want to customize these neighborhoods, make them very unique, that reflect these different planning areas, it may need additional funding. And to the extent that people derive a sense of value, if I'm going to pay for something more, I want to know that it is right here in my neighborhood, and I get to see it, feel it, walk it, drive it every day. That's the benefit of having that kind of assessment district mentality. To the extent that TOD is critically important. I mentioned Tropico. That is one of the study areas that we've gathered a great deal of information about. I do think that is the opportunity for transformation, perhaps the only area for transformation in the South Glendale Community Planning Area. But it all only makes sense if we can achieve that notion of regional transit connectivity, to the extent that Central and South Glendale is central to everywhere. It's 15 minutes close to everything. That is the strategic advantage of these neighborhoods. Certainly, major employers, you've got Disney up the road, but a lot of these small, little tech and entertainment firms that are along the San Fernando creative corridor, that work with the studios, that love to be near the mothership but off-campus, that is critically important to us, as is medical. We are one of the few cities in LA County with three hospitals within its jurisdiction, and you've seen with the folks at Adventist, and now, more recently, with Memorial, they are developing overlay zones for the areas around them to build out their campus. That's employment, that is investment, that's the jobs that a lot of our residents are ultimately looking for, that will help afford that higher quality of life. You've seen this map, and this map is important, because it shows you where the connectivity is. I've been talking about Brand and Central and Chevy Chase, and you see Verdugo way on the right-hand side there. You see Broadway and Colorado. I didn't mention Pacific, but Pacific is also a street with some opportunity, although as you get further north into Moore Park and Vineyard, probably less so, because that is an extremely dense neighborhood. And ultimately, you see where the major connection points are, getting out to the Glen Oaks four-lane thoroughfare, or six-lane thoroughfare that gets you all the way into Burbank. So what we hope to see by way of regional connectivity is the reliance upon this existing grid, that we can do something that is very unique over a long period of time, and hopefully we can make it not so long a period of time, but that remains to be seen. You've heard us talk a great deal about the 1992 survey, the study that was done. At that point, apparently Glendale, as you hear the Metro folks tell the story, was not interested in this type of transit. We've convinced, through a motion from Councilman Najarian, who sits on Metro Board, for Metro to dust off this 1992 rail survey. And the map is a little bit misleading. You have to kind of tilt it like the old Batman, you know, Adam West style, because when you do, you can see that the alignment there is the railroad, San Fernando, the Metrolink right-of-way, and that angled orange piece that you see coming up off of that, spurring off of that and getting onto Glen Oaks, is actually rail that would be in the street. And it's no surprise that when you look at Brand Boulevard, you look at Glen Oaks Boulevard, we have these beautiful medians in the middle of the street, and why do we have those beautiful medians in the middle of the street? These to be red car right-of-way. And so to the extent that we have, our value proposition to Metro is that we are not coming to you hat-in-hand begging. We are a partner, we have assets. One of the major costs of constructing a line like this is assembling the property. Well, the property is already owned by the public. So we will look at this. The Metro staff is, certainly I would defer to Councilman Najarian, but the Metro staff is conducting this study currently. They will be concluding that study and reporting back to the board reportedly in August, and we will wait with bated breath to see what they believe the feasibility of having light rail connecting from the Zerrian Transportation Center, moving up Central Brand and out along Glen Oaks to, ultimately, to the airport, presuming that our partners in Burbank see the movement of people and the alleviation of congestion as something that they want to be a part of. We had a great deal of question, and by no means am I the expert on Measure R2. Measure R2 is still somewhat in flux, I think, to the extent that we had been talking about a 40-year measure that now is moving to an evergreen sales tax override. When it was 40 years on the horizon, the time horizon, I believe we were looking at $680 million. And you see what the breakdown, which really hasn't changed, along the right-hand side fairly recently, it's been static. There was some give-back on some of these categories, but ultimately, this is probably what ends up happening, presuming Measure R2, you know, gets onto the, it is going to be on the ballot, and we'll see if the voters accept it. Transit capital is going to be Metro, but one of the projects that is in there, and I'll show you in a second, is the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit. That is the investment that they are looking at with Glendale. You have Transit Operation...
That's an insult.
You have the Transit Operation Management and Highway Construction. Local return is where we would have some opportunity to put additional resources into the surface work that Mr. Golani's teams do, and then active transportation, biking, walking, hiking, things like that. And then hopefully, the idea for regional rail would be those connections, those seed studies, such as the ones that we've been referencing by way of streetcar.
Could you elaborate on local return? What does that mean?
That comes back to the city, the jurisdictions, on a fixed basis, and so they, the strings attached to that money are getting a little bit more tight, tightly controlled. We used to have much more latitude of what we could do with it. At this point, I want to say, Rubik, it can go towards paving, but only if it's in the alleviation of traffic congestion, traffic calming.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah. So local return comes back to Glendale.
16% of Measure R money is going to go back to the cities?
Is going back to the cities. So the cities wanted to get to 20, the 88 cities of Los Angeles, San Diego.
88 cities. 16% of the total Measure R, which is, I don't know, $50 billion? Is that what it is?
Over the 40 years, our share was 680, so the overall pie, I'm not sure. And now it's gone evergreen, so I don't know how we would value that without setting some horizon.
It would be 680,000?
That's what it was over the 40-year horizon, when it was a 40-year sunset.
These are, when you talk about local return, you're talking about the projects that we would like to have that are on the list for R2 funds?
No, the highway construction, or is it the O and M? I think it's the highway construction. Is what we would compete with on a process going forward in our subregions, in this case, the Arroyo-Verdugo cog. So projects that are in the interest of the region would, generally, they get priority.
Oh, sorry, one more time. If it's $50 billion over 40 years, 16% of that, which is $9 billion, go back to 80...
88 cities.
88 cities, over 40 years. And our share of that is $600,000 over 40 years, or 600,000?
Yearly.
Yearly, annually. Yearly, annually. So we get $640,000 annually from Measure R2.
To repairs, road repairs, or traffic calming? Mayor Devine, Councilman Larpethian, of that share, we can do a variety of stuff, but the latest definition that we have gotten is the purpose of the Measure R, at least what was originally in place, was to alleviate congestion. So you can use it for improving traffic signals, signal coordination, widening of freeway ramps, whereas in the past, as you can, maybe you remember, we have used it also for paving streets. That's no longer as allowed with the new definition. However, the local return that Mr. Ochoa was referring to is more flexible. We have used it primarily for transit operation and purchase of buses, but you can also use it for paving.
But it's primarily funded our B-line operations in the past?
Correct.
On a good day, we get $640,000 a year.
Get to fix one block of streets.
680 million over a 40-year period.
The 40-year time horizon, but now it's gone to an evergreen tax, so...
And how much is the tax?
It's a half-cent.
Half-cent, yeah.
A half-cent forever, from every, you know, every Glendale resident will pay half extra, half-cent in sales tax, so that we get $600,000 a year.
No, we get more than that. I mean, let's not start hating this, if we're going to talk about it.
I haven't started on that.
Well, why don't we invite, perhaps, Phil Washington from Metro to come in? He's not here now, but it's more than 648,000. There's transit capital that we get.
Right.
It funds our bus service to the tune of at least $1 million, along with Burbank and Pasadena and our Tri-City. It's funded our fueling station, it's funded our railroad crossings, there's a lot more than just the local return.
Correct.
Just to put things into perspective, the west side of Los Angeles is getting tens of billions of dollars, and yes, we're getting those crumbs, we're getting the little bones. I'm not denying it.
The total amount that is received is significantly larger, coming from all the different categories. The problem that historically has, not the problem, but the dynamic that historically exists, and it's reflected in the board membership, is that the mayor of the city of LA, the city of Los Angeles, dominates the Metro Board. So goes the city of LA, so goes LA County, and, I mean, that's kind of the spoiler alert, I think, for us, and so certainly the frustration is felt and appreciated. And ultimately, it's going to be the council that has to advocate, because the staff, we can't do that. But to the extent that we hope that we will be competitive, because we will be ready to receive funds, it really will take all five of you working in that vein. I'll show you in a second kind of what our wish list would be by way of transit. I mentioned the NoHo Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit. As you see, there's a variety of alternatives. Alternative A, I've never seen, but that has been shelved. This is alternative B, Chandler to Glen Oaks, then down Brand, out to Broadway, getting on the 134, I believe, at Harvey, making its way into Pasadena. The other version of this... way into Pasadena. The other version of this, you can see, coming from Lancashire and Magnolia, Flower to Glen Oaks, and then moving along Central Broadway and Colorado. And let me stop right there at these. These are, again, two trade-offs. The ridership is significantly higher on these street orientations, because there's more stops along the street to pick up and drop off potential riders. But there is also a requirement, because it's a rapid transit, for a slice of right-of-way, perhaps even up to a lane of right-of-way. I don't know how that quite works on Glen Oaks, Central Broadway, and Colorado, without really rethinking those streets. And so, I think what you ultimately begin to look at is from Hollywood Way, Burbank I-5 to the 134, with only a handful of stops in Glendale. So, the good news.
Go ahead, go ahead, man.
The, you get a handful of stops, cuts the ridership in half, but it actually acts much more as that BRT.
One quick question. We have to have a dedicated lane for the BRT?
On these streets? That is the request of Metro at this point. We've told them that is going to be extraordinarily difficult.
I have a question. How much input do we get, how much input do the cities get in this? I mean, is it, since this is going past the Glendale-Burbank, do we all have veto power, or will the Board ultimately make that decision? And how much do they listen to the cities?
I would tell you, and certainly, I would defer to Mr. Najarian, but I would tell you that if the city of Glendale told the Metro Board, "We don't want the BRT."
I don't think we'd say that, but I'm talking about in terms of the alternatives.
Right. But if they said it's this or nothing, and we said, "We don't want it," then it would be nothing. If it's going to be a cost-benefit analysis, if they want to put it on the street, and we say, "No, it has to be on the freeway," and it has an impact, a negative impact on costs, and it doesn't make up for it by way of return on investment in terms of ridership and alleviation of traffic, they may say, "Well, that's no longer an option we're prepared to look at." I can tell you.
My other question is, and this is maybe a question more for Mr. Najarian or for Rubik. You know, the one thing that seems like always such a missing link is a route that's a fast route from Glendale into Hollywood, into the Hollywood area. Is that something that's on any of the priority plans?
A subway that goes from up?
Well, it doesn't have to be a subway. We're talking, you know, rapid bus right now. But, you know, it's great to have this connectivity, but a lot of our residents go into Hollywood, into that area to work, you know, or points beyond. And as anybody who tries to drive along Los Feliz Boulevard, or Glendale Boulevard, or, you know, or trying to go to downtown LA to then get on the 10 to go west, that's a really tough slot.
You do have Metro lines that go now into Hollywood, right? I think it's the 181, goes east-west, makes its way from Pasadena into Hollywood.
So, the normal buses, you're saying, are the only?
But not a, but not a BRT, no.
So, they're not looking at BRT?
Not.
Or rail?
No, at this point, no.
Has that just not been discussed at all?
The only other BRT line that comes close to that is a Vermont line, which will go probably up to Los Feliz and Vermont, and then south.
Won't come into, is there a way we can ask them to extend that into Glendale? Because that's a very, very crowded and popular destination and route.
Maybe there's connectivity on a bus.
Well, since it's in the city of LA, I think probably the genesis would have to come from the mayor and his folks. I don't think it's one of their top priorities at this point.
It likely wouldn't be if, in fact, it has to impact surface lanes and traffic. I mean, they're going to say, "We have," if you go back to that map, that shows, that map, keep in mind, those dots, the size of those red dots, really indicate the degree of ridership at those locations.
And that bottom one is the one probably, what is the big red one on the bottom? Is that, is that our train station, or is that people going into LA?
It's that Larry Zerrian.
And that's where you're catching MetroLink, which, and I'll talk about in a second, by way of Eco Rapid Transit, or, and/or MetroLink, depending on how Metro wants to move forward. You have an opportunity to give us a north-south connect, where it doesn't go south into Hollywood, but it does go south-southeast down to Union Station.
I don't know if you're looking to hear this kind of input now, but, you know, you have, you're talking the old red car lines. Besides Brand Boulevard, you then continue, and they go up along, you know, through Outwater or along Fletcher, and you've got that existing right-of-way in the middle of the street, and I just.
If the city of LA is so enlightened.
I think that Metro would have looked at that, given that we have no way of getting into Hollywood from Glendale, really, except taking a regular Metro bus.
Unless you want to cut across to the orange line station and take the red line in.
Into NoHo, right.
Right.
But it's kind of a roundabout.
I mean, there's only so many lines that, you know, within so much proximity.
Yeah, we do get to a choke point at the southern tip of the city, and that's problematic for us. This is the NoHo Pasadena Light Rail that we would shoot for. This would be the ideal. The discussion with Metro folks is that if they were trying to model this line, I think the BRT, for whatever it's worth, would be the precursor to this type of investment. I mentioned MetroLink and Eco Rapid Transit. There, at the bottom of the screen, you see Union Station, and then it heads up north past the Bob Hope Airport. Our discussions with high-speed rail and with MetroLink, as you know, have been predicated on this notion that, to the extent, to the extent that the long-haul train traffic would be handled by the high-speed rail folks, we believe that that truly allows MetroLink, in that confined 100-foot right-of-way, to begin offering more frequent service and acting as light rail, even though they are heavy rail locomotives. In the Bay Area, it has been demonstrated to be proved that you can electrify the line and really begin to have light rail that, at the very least, passes right on the southern, southwestern border of the city that interfaces with the Zerrian Transportation Center. I don't think that this is, that this is a pipe dream. With or without high-speed rail, to the extent that the folks at Metro now are saying, "Okay, we know we need connectivity into the central part of the Tri-City area." This has true potential. Our sales pitch has been, for the amount of money you're going to spend taking high-speed rail through the last few miles from Bob Hope Airport to Union Station, you're going to spend a few hundred million dollars. Why not declare Bob Hope Airport, you know, the place to plant a flag, declare victory, and quit, and allow us to run more intensive light rail between that location and Union Station? I mentioned the local streetcars, so you see from the area of Zerrian Transportation Center, up Brand, out to Glen Oaks, out to the Burbank Airport, back around, down Central. This would likely negate the need for at least a couple of our B-line lines. That would hopefully free up not a lot, but some degree of working capital for the operation. So, again, you'd be going to Metro, offering to be a partner, or if worse came to worse, this was something that was undertaken by the city of Glendale, seeing if there is an interesting way to do what they're doing in Santa Ana, for example, in terms of being able to have a locally operated program. At the end of the day, this is kind of the wish list that we would like to see. Light rail along the freeway with off-ramps at the GC3 tech area near the 5 and 134 interchange, at Brand Boulevard, at Harvey Drive, and then off into the San Gabriel Valley and Pasadena, the north-south connection, albeit going from the southeast to the northwest along MetroLink, and possibly the streetcar configuration that is contained herein. The one that is most likely, what is the here and now, would be the BRT, however. So, as I mentioned at the beginning, these are the planning areas. We will be out in all of these planning areas as part of our outreach program upcoming. We are at the beginning of the middle of this process. So, we had done a great deal of assembly of data and information, finalizing the traffic model, certainly edifying the council, going out on our kind of lemonade stand marketing approach, getting feedback in an unconventional way from some of our residents, all setting the stage for the kickoff of the plan and the EIR. And once we release and circulate the EIR, then it is Katy bar the door, because we will be at all of our commissions, the chambers of commerce, NGOs, homeowners' associations, our institutional partners, anybody and everybody, business associations that want to have a discussion about what that, the various alternatives and scenarios are, by all means, we want to have that interaction. As I mentioned, that would be in October. Get us through the beginning of the year, almost into the spring, by way of the comment period. We respond to comments, and then ultimately, the South Glendale Plan comes back to you next June, July of 2017. What we're asking for tonight is any additional discussion or direction that you have for us, comments, certainly. I know there are quite a few as it pertains to transportation and transit funding, but also, more directly, we're asking for your blessing for another $12,000 of community outreach. We just want to make sure that Phil's outreach team has all of the means and staffing that they need to get the word out. That basically is our presentation for tonight.
Thank you very much. Now you can breathe.
[laughing]
I have several speaker cards. I think I'll, I'd like to go to the speakers first. Mr. Gisakian, can we have, let's give them two minutes each, and then we'll discuss. Thank you. Rondi Werner?
Hello, Council and Mayor Devine. Thank you for scheduling this session at a convenient time. As I mentioned in the work session last Tuesday, we were concerned about the 800-acre shortfall of park space in Glendale and the impact that variances and other concessions to developers have had on the quality of life in Glendale. When developers are given density bonuses and concessions on parking and open space in exchange for setting aside a percentage of units for affordable housing, everyone in and near the project suffers a lower living standard, not just those who are benefiting from reductions, but everyone. We urge the city to encourage assistance programs that don't negatively impact the quality of life for low-income residents and their neighbors by overcrowding and underparking our city. We learned during the work sessions that the population goal of Glendale was set at 200,000. We have already fluctuated above and below that figure, and yet, we continue to explore ways to increase density and the resulting traffic congestion and parking shortages, one building project at a time. The transit-oriented development sounds like the latest tool for increasing density in South Glendale. Until the city has an integrated and effective transit system that measurably reduces the number of cars on our streets, it seems premature to open the floodgates on transit-oriented projects. The residential or recreation element of the city's general plan states that Glendale has an extreme deficit of both community and neighborhood park facilities. And in the southern portion of Glendale, this condition has been worsened by the increase in residential density in many of our neighborhoods. While we examine the commercial development, we hope the city will amend our zoning code to limit the proximity of smoke shops to schools and to one another. These shops have proliferated in recent years to the point that other cities have revised their codes to limit these. In conclusion, while we're editing the book on South Glendale, Adams Hill hopes the revised plan will take into account the quality of life for all residents, and we look forward to being represented on an advisory committee, so we can work with staff to ensure that the changes to the plan do not come at the expense of the living standards of our residents.
Steve Matier, followed by Erica Camp.
Hi, good evening, Councilmember. My name is Stephen Matier. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to address to you on this matter. I know the priority meetings were usually when people were working, so it's very appreciative to have this opportunity to come after work and talk to you. One of the things I'd want to stress is, as the city's densifying, I think it's important to also remember that as a goal to get people out of their cars, we need to provide safe streets for walking, biking, and transit. You know, despite the growth that's gone on, there hasn't been a significant level of increase in the B-line service or the addition of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So, I think that's really a goal. This plan should be to provide safe access, especially to the MetroLink station, especially to, you know, Brand and Broadway, where we know the major hubs are for transit. I'd also like to add, too, that park space is really important. My wife and I are expecting our kid in a couple days.
Congratulations.
And so, I, thank you. And I really want to stress the importance of having parks in downtown, where I can take my kid, where we can play, play catch, you know, have a place to recreate. And currently, there's really not that many places to do that, and that's something I'd like this plan to address going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Erica, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Hi there. I'm Erica Camp. I'm a resident of South Glendale, and I'm also the director of Go Glendale, which is the Transportation Management Association for the city. So, we work with a lot of large employers, multi-tendon office buildings, and now, some of the residential buildings in the downtown area. So, I'm speaking here kind of with both hats on, and I think I, I look forward to working with your team in, you know, as you continue to refine the plan. But I think I want to focus my comments today mostly on the idea of active transportation and connecting people who live or work in South Glendale to the train station, because I think we have a great asset already in the train station. It's a 12-minute MetroLink ride to get to Union Station, and then that opens you up to the whole region. But right now, if you wanted to walk or bike to the train station, which for much of South Glendale, even including the downtown area, would be quite doable, it's, it could be easier to find, and it could be a lot safer for people. And so, I think focusing on doing that would be, we'd get a lot more people out there and walking and biking, and in turn, it would make that neighborhood, you know, it would make the community healthier and get people out, and be able to impact some of the other goals that you had in the presentation as well. So, yeah, I think we'll look forward to working with you guys some more on some of the details. Thank you.
Do we not have bike lanes down there around the station? Bike lanes?
Ideally, around the station. I don't believe so. One of the things that we have called out, even in the bike master plan, are lanes and sharrows, and even road diets in some of these areas. But again, two sides to every coin. You do the road diet, you know, you push it here, it pops out there. That's why I think a lot of what you'll see is kind of maintain and enhance, small detailed improvements.
Margaret?
Oh, my name is Margaret Hammond, and I do want to commend you for having, taking the time to change the meeting to tonight, and also, all the work that you have done and the staff has done. When I came to Glendale, almost 50 years ago, I, the train station was, you know, not in very good condition, but the streets around it were filled with little homes, not the manufacturing and the stuff that's there now. It's, when I drive over there, I feel so sad, because it just changed the neighborhood with rezoning or whatever you did. But I am in favor of an 8A2, of giving the money for the outreach. But the other thing is, I want to emphasize, I really feel that a historic survey should be done as soon as possible. There is so much history in that area, and I know it. I could tell you every house I know. I met Ulele Richardson, who lived on my street, three, half a block from me. That was the Richardson, the daughter of the original Richardson's. And the Richardson's house is right on the corner of Mariposa. That was the original one that was moved from down in Tropico to that corner, so that they could do their planning. They had a plan for that area. Tropico was the first perfectly planned development in America. They had stores, they had schools, they had churches. So, it was a wonderful district. It really was. And I'd like to see it kept that way, or as much that way, as we can keep it from going any further with more density and so forth. Actually, the kids from Glendale had to go to the schools in Tropico. So, it was an important thing. It was an important place. And we do have a lot of history, and it needs to be, do the surveys, so we know which buildings are worthy of keeping as historic resources. Thank you very much.
Alec Bartrsov, followed by Matt Dixon.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartrsov. Just wanted to thank you, like the previous speakers have said, for having this meeting in the evening. I also want to thank staff and the council members that took the time to meet with me or respond to my emails about concerns about the outreach for this plan. I have concerns about the outreach still. I think that an advisory committee would be well-received by the community, just like the North Glendale Community Plan received. There's value and consistency with having meetings that are open to the public that focus on various issues. We're learning today, as you have with the previous two workshops, where transit can be discussed for hours and hours and hours, and we still don't have the information that we need. We're just scratching the surface with the information. So, as a commissioner, I'm concerned that when this comes to our commission on transit, we're not going to have enough time to review all of the information, to understand the various alternatives, to talk about walking and biking and transit, comprehen- various alternatives, to talk about walking and biking and transit comprehensively and to, you know, it's part of our responsibility as commissioners to give you a recommendation. I'm not sure that I'm, I don't feel confident that we'll be given the resources or the wherewithal to provide feedback. Same concern for the average resident that doesn't happen to be an urban planner or a commissioner. I don't know how an outreach meeting for an hour and a half in South Glendale is going to provide the feedback that you're going to want or find valuable. Maybe you'll do an overarching theme of the plan and cover all the segments, and of course, you'll hear the usual, "We need more open space, we want less congestion, we want more options for transit." We already know that information. I think it would be, it would be in the interest of the residents and the commissioners and everybody else for us to have a meeting on open space, a meeting on transit, a meeting on affordable housing, so that all of the various stakeholders can provide input and give you valuable feedback. So that's my concern. I'm hoping that we can figure out ways to be more comprehensive with the outreach. Thank you.
Matt Dixon, followed by Mike Kaiser.
Good evening. Thank you as well for having the meeting in the evening, give the public opportunity to comment. I haven't lived in Glendale very long, actually, but I've found it to be a very welcoming community and a city that really cares about people. I think that's even reflected in this meeting tonight. One of the things that I love about living in South Glendale is that you see all different kinds of people. When I walk down my street, I see families with new kids, I see elderly couples, I see children playing in the street, I see young professionals. It's a very diverse community, and I think one of the reasons that we have that in South Glendale is because we have so many different types of housing. You walk down the street, you see little garage apartments, you see some single-family homes still, you see townhouses, you see apartment buildings. And I think the plan, the South Glendale plan should, needs to consider that if we want our city to keep being a welcoming city, we need to figure out how to make room for more people, and that means we need to have all types of housing. So we need to, the plan needs to consider ways that we can update the zoning so that it makes it possible to build those types of housing that have helped make the community what it is. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you for having this meeting and thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I just want to follow up on a couple people's remarks, Steve and Erica. I think when you're planning for South Glendale, I think that we can take a lesson from last week, this last Sunday, actually, in the LA Times, there was an article about the weight finding sign. There was a picture of the weight finding sign out here. And what was really discouraging about that sign was a quote in the article that said, "We're looking to help tourists that come into our city." Really? Okay, well, I mean, if I come visit the city, I'm not going to come by a city hall to find out that it's an eight-minute walk down to the Americana, I'll just drive to the Americana. The point is that when we think about what we're doing to the city and providing the residents a way to get around the city, active transportation includes everywhere, not just, not just Glendale, not just, it's Southern California, it's into Governor Brown's. So we're asking the rate of return, what do we get on investment? These are all, you're talking about isolated issues that really, we're talking about major connectivity. How can I get on my bike right now from California Chester? How long will it take me to get to MetroLink Station? And how long will it take me to get to Berkeley for the high-speed rail? That's what I want to know. So connectivity in overall to relieve congestion. So when you're building these structures and increasing density around this downtown area, just remember, there's a finite number of spaces for people to park. And I think those spaces should be reserved for the people that live in North Glendale that have to, they can't walk four or five miles down to the mall, you know, or people that want to come into town. So we want to talk about biking, all these issues on an overall, not just isolate, "I walk here, I bike here." I want you to, I would encourage the council to, in your development, to get out there and walk the city and also use the police, the good men and women that wear the uniform. They're very observant. And I heard that recently at a meeting, I'll finish with this, I heard a meeting recently with Justin Robertson, when I met with him, about how the city has no idea about how people get around on bicycle and walking downtown in South Glendale. Why ride every single day? And so is Erica, I passed her on Columbus. So more outreach and have the men and women in the uniform that have great observational skills get out there on bicycles, please, and that'll help reduce the congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that was my last card, so I will open discussion to council. Councilmember Frieden?
Well, first, before I make my comments, I wanted to ask Scott to talk a little bit about the outreach, about Alex's concern in particular, and whether you've learned lessons from the outreach in North Glendale and in South Glendale and, you know, kind of, do you feel pretty good about your strategy for getting out to the residents? And are you also willing to, along the way, change that if you feel that you're not really reaching people? And will they have enough time, the commissioners and the public, to really get the information that they need?
That's a great question, and the short answer is, we want to make sure that everyone is as comfortable as they can be. You talk about an advisory committee. We have a number of advisory committees, one in traffic and transportation that Alex sits on, we have another one for planning, we have another one for parks and open spaces. And we have, it's multiplied by the number of residents and partners that we have in HOAs and the Coordinating Council and everything else that's out there. So I don't think we're going to be at a loss for input. Think about this, when we were at a morning meeting, we had 35 people on two different days at 10 o'clock when it wasn't convenient to them, and here we are in the evening, and we have, at least in terms of the number of speakers, you know, seven speakers. And that's, that's not, you know, the integration of anything anyone had to say, it's a reflection that not everything works for everybody. If we have an advisory committee that basically shadows what this council is going to do, there's no reason to think that what you're hearing today is going to be any different than they're going to be hearing in their session or any of our commissions are going to hear. So I feel very comfortable with the outreach that we're doing, and if we are somehow dissatisfied that we're not just reaching some part of the community, then go back and do more.
Okay, so my first suggestion in terms of the outreach would be to report back to us, you know, every couple months or however long you think it is, you know, whatever span of time, so that you can tell us how many people you've reached, what kind of participation you're getting. And I'm assuming that they'll also be doing sessions that are intensive about certain subjects, like transportation, like housing, so that instead of just getting the kind of regular feedback, that you can really get into the weeds with each different area, because every neighborhood's going to be different, right? So that's one thing. And, you know, this is just the beginning of the process, so anything I say now is just very kind of preliminary.
Can I make just one point on that before you, because I know you have something to say. Keep in mind, this session, the previous two sessions, were there to whet your appetite as policymakers. This is not the all-encompassing four corners of what the plan is going to be. This is to get you ready, because in the coming months, you're going to have to wade through this.
So there's a couple very quick comments. Since this is a transportation discussion tonight, somebody mentioned the bicycle infrastructure, and I have to say that I'm pretty proud of what we've been doing in the last few years with bicycle infrastructure. It's really, I mean, it's a complete night and day in terms of several years ago, when I was riding my bike every day to and from City Hall and around the town to what I see right now with green lanes and with more, with charros and with at least striping. We don't have a lot of protected bike lanes yet. Hopefully, we'll start doing, we'll do that infrastructure in the future, but it's really a big difference. And we need to continue that, because that will be, that and walking and public transportation will be the solution to downtown as, you know, as we grow, which we inevitably will, to get people out of their cars and into that alternative in public transportation. And I agree with the speaker about Union Station, which right now has kind of somehow mysteriously not been really taken into consideration as a transit hub to get people there safely walking and biking with signage and with everything else. And I will hope that as you go through this process, you'll look at other places in South Glendale that are important, and I know the Bicycle Master Plan looks at that, but places like parks, like major connectivity, how do we get people, I mentioned Hollywood, how do you get people by bike into Hollywood? I mean, that's a really tough one. How do you get them to the LA River bike path safely? So I hope that we continue to look at all of that. I think regional public and alternative transportation is extremely important. I'm very concerned about the lack of connectivity into Hollywood on sort of Measure R2 and also just now. It's a major place people go to work, it's really hard to bike to, it's really hard to drive to during rush hour, and I'd love to see more focus put on that regionally. And I'd love to see the beelines run at night, you know, it's really frustrating that they run, you know, they stop running at 6:30, and if you want to go and take in a movie and dinner in downtown, if you're coming from North Glendale, you know, when we do it, sometimes we'll take the beeline downtown, and we have to walk home. So it would be nice to at least get that going into the evenings on our more popular routes. And as we move forward as a community, that we come up with alternative ways of getting people around, maybe, maybe sort of van-type shuttles or something. But we need to think about it as our population ages, and we want people to not always have to drive everywhere, you know, as they go into the residential neighborhoods and up in the hills. So this would be my comments. Thank you.
Comments? Let's have our guy head in.
Thank you. I heard a couple of times, increasing density. I don't think we are, this plan is to increase density in South Glendale. Just want to make that very clear. We're not here to upzone the entire South Glendale and overbuild it. I don't want to paint that picture out there. So there may be some areas that, like IMU turned into IMUR, which is industrial mixed use residential, but we haven't, this is not what the plan is. The plan is to improve the quality of life in South. Do we have, part of this plan, can we have a report as to what our ridership is at Larry's Arian's Transportation Center? And where do people go? Are they people of residents of Glendale who are using it, or these are daytime employees? If I understand, but you're only one. I just want to know how many people are using it.
I don't, I don't have that information tonight, but we do have that information through MetroLink.
Okay, so I would like to know, are they the daytime employees that they use MetroLink, and they come to Larry's Arian Station, and that's where that connectivity from there to Brand Boulevard, the car dealership, the Americana, the Galleria, as well as the Business District and Hilton on hotels on the, on Glennos would be very important to connect all of this together. Also, when we talk about the improving quality of life and the ridership, also considering our seniors and diner ride issue or service that we have, see what the, what the, what the numbers are, are they up, are they down? We have the same-day service nowadays, if I understand it. And most of the comments that I wanted to make last week, I made as far as creating the villages, that it's walkable and it's connect, we can connect them together. I don't want to take so much time and go over the same thing, but I think this is a great start. And also the community, the outreach meetings that we have, we need to have a roster as to, a signing sheet, as to how many people are attending, and are they repeat people, are the same people attending different, different meetings? Or there are different people who have different interests, and they come attend to these meetings to, I think that's very important to know as well. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Sinanian?
I'll keep it short. Yeah, this is a great start. I think these three study sessions were very informative for the council and gave all of us, including our residents, a taste of things to come. I, I'm glad I insisted on having this meeting in the evening as opposed to the morning, so everyone seemed to be happy with it. They were thanking the council. I want to thank Mayor Devine for backing my request to move it to the evening. And I think the results were, I don't want to make assumptions, but certainly, a lot of the speakers were not people who were there in the morning sessions, so it kind of worked. And we hope that the outreach that the city will conduct will be very extensive and very carefully structured to make sure that every segment of South Glendale is given appropriate attention and has the appropriate amount of feedback for us to hear also ultimately, for staff first, and then for council. Transportation is, again, remains a major concern for me. Again, we, what we're trying to do here is set out what our vision is for South Glendale. And in the 21st century, not to have modern means of transportation is not acceptable, especially for those parts of the city that are so densely populated. And I, you know, I'm worried when I hear about these rapid, bus rapid transit things that are being, that are being offered to us as a consolation, because that's, you know, mid-20th century technology that we're being offered, and is not right. Housing affordability is major, major concern, so whatever we do, that has to remain a focal point. We, just today, we had our staff report on the low-income housing and
Yes, on affordability in general.
Affordability in general. And that clearly is in the center of council's attention. It has to be a major part of this study that we're doing. And finally, my colleagues covered most of the issues. I agree, again, we're, it's going to be a long cooperative process, and some people are going to disagree over some things, which is fine, that's the way it goes. And I do believe that these periodic reports from staff as to how the community outreach efforts are going are very useful so that we have our fingers on the pulse of the process. And I look forward to us completing this in the near future. I don't know how long it'll take. It should take as long as it needs for it to be done well. So that's it.
So, so good. We are just kicking off the work that lies ahead. So we, on the dais, certainly reserve our rights to modify and craft our vision as we think about this plan and as we hear from the public. But for me, at this point, I'm going into this with the basics, and that is to try and reduce the parking issues, try and reduce the speeding issues, make it more pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly. I'm very unhappy with Colorado Boulevard. I said it before, I'll say it again, we just, just yesterday, or in fact, it might have been even today, were alerted of a abandoned child by two residents of one of those flea-bag motels on Colorado Boulevard. I think we really should put our sight into cleaning that area up, and it's going to do a lot and help the entire South Glendale area. Transit will come around. We're working on, from the Larry's Arian Transportation Center, the first mile, last mile concept. So we're going to be, with the help of Metro, bringing in bike share, bike rentals, discounted Uber and taxi rides for folks that need to get to the bike, excuse me, to the train station and maybe to the center of our Business District. So, you know, that's my general broad framework, and I think if we look at those things, coupled with good code enforcement, that we're going to make South Glendale a much better place than it is today.
Okay, so I'll wrap this up. First of all, I want to thank the speakers for being here. I want to say to Alec, I really do respect your knowledge of transportation and mobility, and I hope that you will use the outreach opportunities that we have to, to bring your ideas forward, to bring your friends, and, and help us to formulate this, this model that we're in South Glendale. I want to say to my fellow council members, it's kind of like, is the glass half-full or half-empty? The R2 funds for the BRT, that's the big project for, for the Arroyo de Go R2 funds. The orange line in the valley started as a BRT project. The ridership was so good that now they're looking into the light rail, the possibility, well, they're, they're constructing it, I guess, now. So as Mr. Ochoa said, this BRT project is a groundbreaking sort of thing where we can, if the ridership is good and it works out, we'll get specified stations where the bus will stop, infrastructure and other amenities. will stop, infrastructure and other amenities that go along with this BRT project. So that's a little bit of a glimmer of hope that there might be some-
Very dim.
That there might be some progress in the future. I'm, I'm happy to see that there's a streetcar mentioned in the, in the plans. And, you know, I've, I've been an advocate for some sort of an electric bus in the downtown that would connect the north and the south. And so I hope that we can support a project like that to eliminate cars on the street and those that are living in all of these apartments that don't want to walk and hop onto a streetcar or an electric bus or, or some sort of a, a, a transportation vehicle and, and get to where they want to go. Expanding the bike lanes, I agree. We should have those going to Larry Zarian, especially if, you know, people want to, to use the facility for connecting. And of course, the connectivity is the biggest issue. We have to, we have to become a part of the region again. So I hope that, that there's more outreach from the South. And I think the, the reason that we don't have quite as many people here is because of the subject matter. And I think they were probably interested in the, the density and the building and development rather than transportation, although I appreciate those of you that are here. And so that would conclude my, my comments for the evening.
Just to clarify something. The Glen Oaks brand, that TRAM feasibility study that's being dusted off, I honestly believe it's a farce. The reason I say that is because the money's not there. The money is not there. Someone needs to tell me where that money's going to come from. It's not in R1, it's not in R2 for sure. So, fine, they look at, they look again at the, at this study and they come back with a report in August. In November, R2 is going to be on the ballot. The list for R2 is already finalized. So where is the money going to come from for this? So if there's an answer for that?
Well, I have an answer. And transportation funding is very, it's very complex. There are multiple sources of funding. The important thing before you do any transportation project is have it ready to go. Have it on the shelf, have your planning, have your basic concepts ready to go. It's when you have that in your hand, you can go to try for federal funds or for state funds or public-private partnerships to get it happen. Unless you do that first step, they're saying, well, you guys haven't, what are you talking about, a streetcar? Well, put it together and then let us see what you're talking about. So at this point, even though there isn't a guaranteed source of funds, it's all the more reason that we should work to, to complete the plan and have it on the shelf, ready to go. Because transportation funding drops in, in the most unexpected times. And that's how some of the subways were done. Not all those subways on the west side are done by Measure R. A lot of them are federal funds. They go in for tiger grants. There's just a huge source of funding. So once you get your plan and your budget, you know what to ask for, a little bit of advocacy, a little bit of luck, a project can become a reality. By no means is it a for-sure thing. But it's not as, you know, it's not a, you know, a star in the Orion constellation that you can barely make out.
And with all due respect, the reason I'm so skeptical is because Eco Rapid Transit is a shovel-ready project that was supposed to be funded in R1. And it's not being funded in R1. And now it's being only the southern portion of it, the West Santa Ana branch is being kicked back into R2 to be funded in 2047. The level of cynicism is unbelievable.
And for the record, I voted last month to advance the Eco Rapid. I was one of three votes on the Metro Board. And for whatever reason, many of the directors were uncomfortable with the plan or the, the management or the marketing of the Eco Rapid. And they were not willing to commit the completion of Eco Rapid before they looked at their other plans. Whether it was parochialism, those folks that wanted the Crenshaw Line completed first, or the airport connector, or-
Sepulveda Tunnel.
Sepulveda, Sepulveda Tunnel, which I'm not a fan of.
Absurd. It's the most absurd thing ever proposed.
So it's, and that doesn't mean it's going to take that long. It may, you know, a, a different Metro Board or a different source of funding may push it up earlier. But it's, it's a zoo out there. I mean, everyone's, clearly, the westsiders in the Metro world are the ones that have the clout because they have the population base, they have the political base, they've got four supervisors pulling for it, they've got the mayor of LA and his three appointees, you've got a South, a South Bay representative, you've got the West Side Cities representative. And they, it's just a matter of the votes. And, and the ridership. They did the Expo line to the beach, Union Station to Santa Monica Pier. And it's getting incredible ridership. So that's the kind of thing that justifies investing money. The Gold Line in the San Gabriel Valley, although a, I think a well-designed line and well-written, isn't getting those type of great numbers that the Expo line is getting. So it doesn't receive that much attention. And as a result, the San Gabriel Valley folks are fighting tooth and nail to get their project completed, whereas the Expo went through so quickly and, and justifiably so. It's getting huge ridership. So it's, it's complicated, I guess. And you know as well as I do, as, as a member of the Eco Rapid Board. And it's not always fair. You always, sometimes you get the short end of it. I don't know.
Just like everything else, it's very political.
It's-
Yeah. Okay. So we need, with all of that input, I hope that we've given staff some direction, have we? And hopefully, the members of the South Glendale community will be on hand for all the outreach and feed us more information and more feedback so that we can come up with a, a good community plan. So I need a motion, do I need a motion to provide direction to staff?
The motion should be just direction as provided by the council members at the meeting and then the second item, they need approval as well.
Second item? Can we take them together?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. And roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, he is fire chief regarding concerning, regarding concerning proposed Fire Recruit Academy of the fiscal year 2017. Be one is the resolution of appropriation fund of firefight recruitment and training academy.
And his staff report?
Yes, ma'am. The fire service is one of those professions where we hire folks generally in classes. People come in as the class of 89 or the class of 90 or so on, so forth. And at this point, as we see baby boomers getting to the, the point where they are heading off into retirement, we are asking your permission to commence with a fire recruit academy for 17 firefighters. I will tell you quite proudly, and I think the council even more so than I, because you have voiced this desire, this concern for, for much longer than, than I have, certainly longer, longer than I've been here. But that when Chief Greg Fish was seated, one of his directives was to make sure that the department progresses on its path towards reflecting the community. And I can tell you that this recruit academy is perhaps the most diverse academy that we have ever seen in Glendale. Two female firefighters, three Hispanics, five Armenian-American firefighters that will join the ranks, the proud ranks of the Glendale Fire Department, all at a very high level of service. By no means does anyone not earn their keep on, on the fire floor, on the apparatus floor. But we are extraordinarily excited about bringing these 17 recruits in for the 13-week training. What we have for you today is a resolution that would allow us to pay for the, the academy itself. And the all-in number is $1.397 million and change. If you have any specific questions, Chief Fish and Chief Regusa are in the back.
I have a question.
Chief? Of the chief or?
Yeah, the chief.
Okay, let's let him get up here.
We have had criticism in the past for not recruiting women or bringing women into the department. And can you tell us if you have any females in your recruits this, this go-around?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Friedman. Yeah, we, we have made huge efforts into making our, the makeup of this next academy to reflect the community. And so we've been doing a huge outreach with a lot of different people. We did, we actually created a written test that would draw in diversity. And it's actually paid off fantastically. So we had 18 females that made it to the oral interview process. And we had about six of them that we can reach between now, between the first list and the next list. If things go, if, if with a little bit of luck, I might be able to even get a third female in this next academy. So unheard of precedent for, at least for our fire department. And I'm looking forward to seeing the progress that we can continue to make into the future.
Thank you for elaborating on that.
Absolutely.
Chief, congratulations. And I want to move the item.
One quick question.
Yeah, no, I move the item. You can ask your questions still. Such a short time and you're making such great impact.
Thank you for your support.
Never doubted for a second.
So these are, Chief, these are recruits to, to attend the academy?
Yes.
So they're starting there?
So these are, these are recruits that are coming in. Nine of them will be EMTs, which is an emergency medical technician. And then the rest of the 17 will be paramedics. And so the nine go to paramedic school after they graduate from the academy, which is a 13-week academy. Starting on January 2nd, they start attending paramedic school at UCLA for six months. The other group that did not go to paramedic school will immediately go to the line and they'll start riding on the fire engines and the fire trucks.
So nine EMTs and 17 paramedics, you said?
No, no, no. It's, it'll be a total of 17. It'll be nine paramedics and eight non-paramedics. Provided, as the numbers stand right now, provided that we don't see an unforeseen retirement or somebody quitting or resigning or something like that, which is usually not the case.
There are, there are three females, five Armenian-Americans and three Hispanics?
That is, that is what we currently have right now in the mix. That could change, though. Again, I have civil service rules that I must operate within. And so collectively, that's what the numbers are looking like right now.
All right. Thank you.
I have two cards, but I just want to ask you, are our firefighters back from the sand fire?
Yes, they are. Every, the, we sent out three strike teams from Area C and all three strike teams have been brought back safely, so.
Great, great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two cards, Chinook Ramirez.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. One minute.
Thank you very much. I, I have to say, this is definitely not an easy profession. I salute and I commend all these firefighters, whether they are female or male. And I'm just wondering, do you hire military veterans for the city of Glendale in the fire department? But even so, I commend you because carrying all that gear and watching these poor souls up there taking on and battling these huge infernos is incredible. It is scary. It is scary. I would not do it. And I commend you, I salute you, I bow before you and say, man, you got balls, because I could never do what you do. And it takes a heart of gold and I don't know what it really it does, but wow, it is incredible. And again, your pilots, your air support out there flying those tankers that we're leasing from Canada to combat those flames and infernos, my God. God bless you and God bless America and Donald Trump. Oh, God.
Mike Mulhill? I think he left, right? Okay. That's our last speaker on this item.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, you second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Next item, please.
C is Director of Human Resources Regarding Selection of Proposal for Third-Party Administrative Services Supplement Cities In-House Compensation Section. C1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with AdminSure Inc. to provide third-party administrative services for a period of three years. Two is a resolution appropriating $99,217 from under-designated compensation insurance fund 27900-614 to count number 43110614215.
Mr. Ochoa?
We are quite excited, actually, to bring this one to you because it, it really emanates from this dais, from the City Council, as a means of expediting our, our effectiveness of our workers' comp program. As you know, continuous improvement is a major part of the operation as it's shared by Mr. Doyle and Ms. Mauer in legal. And one of the things that we had done early on in my tenure was looking at carving out, the carve-out program that would allow police and fire personnel in particular to be able to receive the type of care necessary that would return them to service more quickly. So the idea that especially in 24-hour operations, that if somebody is not in the line, that you have to backfill for that person, that it would ultimately impact overtime costs, we were able to work out with our labor partners, this carve-out program. That was the first step. That has worked quite well. And I think Matt and Ann would tell you that we are very happy with that. The next step, the part that came from council, was this discussion of augmenting our in-house adjuster staff, the workers' compensation staff, looking kind of head-on a swivel, understanding what the industry is like, what are the average caseloads like, how many should we have? And rather than hiring more staff in-house, was there a way to go to the market, see if there were private third-party administrators or TPAs, and bring them in to handle a part of the caseload that would best befit the skills and abilities of our in-house adjusters? We did do that RFP. We received eight, I believe, submittals. We focused down on three. And as of tonight, we are recommending to you AdminSure as the overall best fit for, for Glendale and our workers' comp program. If you have any specific questions about the process or the workload, I'm sure either Matt or Ann could answer those for you.
Any questions?
I have some questions. So I understand we put this out for RFP. And there's, there's something called a PAR standard in the workers' compensation field where the state comes in and does a profile audit review. And Glendale was doing pretty well, weren't we? I mean, we were, we were ahead of the city of Burbank, we were ahead of Pasadena by far, Santa Monica. There were just a few cities better than us. Torrance was, was better, et cetera. But we still felt, still feel it necessary to go out and bring in this new group to take some of the load off of our, our people.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Najarian, we believe that, that our process would be even better. The audit that you're referring to by the state is one that essentially focuses on compliance, whether or not we're providing the, the core level of care that's required under the workers' compensation statutes. And as you, as you indicated, we've done very well. We finished, I, I think it was sixth out of the 50 agencies that were audited. So we've, we've always done very well and the staff's done a great job. I think the focus of this effort and other efforts that we've been doing has to do with really reduction of our costs overall. There's three major factors that go into workers' compensation costs. The big one is medical, and it's the, the cost of providing the care to our, to our employees. Second one is litigation or legal costs, to the extent that these cases get litigated. The third has to do with the costs associated with leave times, particularly our public safety, our police and fire folks who have, you know, they're most prone to getting long-term injuries. And oftentimes, the amount of time that they spend off, it creates very, very high costs for us because while they're off, in most cases with, you know, these two professions, we have to hire under backfill. And in most cases, the people that we're hiring in backfill are being hired, brought in at overtime. Those things factor into our workers' compensation costs. So the effort here is to really focus on, you know, not just complying with the bare minimum of what the state requires, but also providing that care in a more timely manner. And as Mr. Ochoa said, you know, we do a good job with our existing staff, but there are things that we believe we can do to facilitate the return-to-work process and get our, get our employees their doctor's appointments quicker and get our employees seen by the doctor and get those reports back quicker. And ultimately, get them healed faster, get them back to work so we can reduce really that third element of our, of our high costs.
Okay. So AdminSure is the recommended third-party administrator. And part of the RFP judging is on their fee structure. So my question is, is AdminSure a bundled third-party administrator where all the ancillary services, such as medical review and lean adjustment, are they all in AdminSure? Or do we still have independent companies that do things like the medical review? Or do we still have independent companies that do things like the medical review services for us?
AdminSure will do all of, all of the work that we intend to go there, have, have go before them. And that would be our police and fire cases. Right now, we, we are keeping the non-safety activity within our own staff, and we have the bill review, we have utilization review with other vendors right now with.
We're keeping that?
Yes.
In-house?
Yes.
Or control over, over that?
That's correct.
Because the only, and my only point is, in all this questioning, is that sometimes a group will come in with the best administration cost, but there's all these other ancillary services where they make up their low fee. It's like a low-cost leader in the administration, but the med review and all these other services are jacked up and are a little bit higher when with enough cases, you know, they make up for it. So as long as you're telling me that the, those ancillary services are still managed and overseen by our staff.
Absolutely.
Then I have no other comments on this, and I would be able to move forward.
Mr. Garpetian?
What is the fiscal impact on doing this work? The fiscal impact of us doing the work or having a third party looking over everything?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Garpetian, Garpetian, the cost of this third-party administrator will be, I believe, $360,000 per year, and we're engaging professional services agreement over three years. Now, the bulk of the cost of what we spend on workers' compensation, you know, the things I addressed earlier, the medical, it amounts to over, you know, $10 million. And so we feel if we can spend a little money and improve our services and, again, get people back to work quicker, that we can put a big dent into that, into that $9, $10 million cost overall, so.
So by spending $300,000, are we going to recoup our costs and, and some more in the long run, or?
That is our belief, yes.
Significantly reducing the liability.
So it's reducing the liability from $10 million to lower number, basically?
Hopefully, yes.
And that, that $10 million is our, our cost of our insurance, or is it cost of the, the workers' comp liability insurance, or cost of the, what we're paying to the employees who are at home and they're, they're being rehabbed?
It's the total, the total liability, and we are self-insured, so. Now, we do have some excess coverage for when the, the claims reach a certain amount, but for the most part, we are covering those costs right now.
And most of the employees who are on workers' comp are from police and fire?
Not necessarily. I would say the, they're the two biggest departments, police.
Because I heard police and fire, and that's why I'm asking.
That's who would be covered by this contract, but a lot of our field folks, Public Works and GWP are the other two very large departments. They're doing physical activity, that's where we see a lot of injuries. But this aspect, this part of the program, by segregating out safety, we, it's a great pilot experiment for us to work with. So we kind of know what the edges of it are, and we can evaluate the effectiveness.
So if it works out well, you're gonna, are we going to expand to the other departments?
Could be. It's a function of how well it, it works out.
Okay. And it's a three-year contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll move eight, C1 and 2, if there's no other cards or discussion or...
There are no cards. I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Next item, please.
Eight D, City Manager and City Attorney Regarding Second Amendment to Amended and Restated Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement Creating the Burbank-Glendale-Pasadena Airport Authority. Eighty-one resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the Second Amendment to the amendment and restated joint powers agreement among the cities of Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena, creating an agency to be known as Burbank-Glendale-Pasadena Airport Authority. We do have one card.
Mr. Ochoa?
Actually, I'll defer to my learned colleague here.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you are aware, that the Burbank-Glendale-Pasadena Airport Authority and the city of Burbank have been negotiating for quite some time, an agreement which would allow for the construction of a terminal, modern terminal, to replace the existing terminal at Burbank Airport. That, that, that agreement obviously requires the approval of the Burbank City Council and the voters of the city of Burbank. In exchange for that approval, this, the airport authority and the cities of Pasadena and Glendale have been asked to approve amendments to the joint powers agreement governing the airport authority to require supermajority vote for certain items that are listed in the report, but such as future expansion, long-term leases, issuance of bonds. I can tell you, I've just learned that the Burbank City Council has approved the agreement, has approved the development agreement for the airport tonight, and has agreed to put that matter before the voters for the November election, so that all that's required on our end is to approve the amendments to the joint powers agreement.
So has Pasadena.
Correct.
So do I have a motion?
Good question.
You have a card, right?
When it says supermajority of voters, are you talking about the board members or you're talking, or the voters of Burbank? Because they have to vote on it.
Right. So majority of the Burbank voters approve the, the agreement to allow for the expansion, but this will amend the JPA to require supermajority vote, meaning a majority of all the boards' commissioners, as well as two of each, of each city's commissioners. So essentially allowing Burbank's voter, three members to stop any, any of these other actions, such as expansion of the airport and the long-term leases.
Okay. And these are items that Burbank has for decades been extremely sensitive about, and the long-term leases are, obviously, these are leases that are located in the city of Burbank. So this thing has been fought through for a long time by, by a bunch of, you know, not only the authority, but also a bunch of lawyers. And it's, it's a good deal. It's a good deal for the airport authority, it's a good deal for Burbank, it's a good deal for Glendale.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay, good.
So what's Glendale?
You are comfortable with the...
Well, Glendale gets is, this, this is something that the airport authority is offering to the people of Burbank, along with their, their vote. Besides getting the safe terminal, they'll get this majority that addresses a lot of the concerns people have had in the past with the construction of a new terminal. What Glendale and Pasadena get is that the airport is certainly of great regional importance for our area, for our local businesses, for our residents. And what we will get is, we'll get for our traveling public here in Glendale, our businesses and our residents, a safer airport terminal when they travel through the Burbank Airport. And that really, as an authority member, for myself and Mr. Sinani, and I think that really our highest mandate is to try as best we can to ensure that the visitors and the passengers at the Burbank Airport have the absolute safest trips that they can have, and that includes having a safe terminal. And that's what this will provide. Okay. I have one card. It's been moved.
Well, so let me just ask a question. Let's say we wanted to build a, a larger and better metro link station, either on the, on the airport property or adjacent to the railroad property. And two of the Burbank council members don't like it. That kills it?
No, because this only affects the items that are listed. They don't get supermajority on everything, they only get it for those particular items. And I don't believe that any of the transit rail facilities fall under the supermajority provision.
Well, I guess Noy is the last one, says it may result in an increase in the noise-impact area of the airport facility.
It's generally the, the area around the airfield where the planes land. I think it's related to that.
And believe it or not, believe it, with all the lawyers who have gone over this, there are passages and amendments and definitions for all of these that are very, very lengthy.
Can we get our name back on the airport, or?
The airport has been rebranded as...
Only on some of the planes.
Yeah, how did Hollywood get into this?
The logo? Did you pick a logo yet? Okay, I have one card. Chinook Ramirez.
Madam Mayor, would it be one minute?
If I could build my home on the tarmac, I would do that in a heartbeat. Code enforcement would kick me out, no doubt. I would say that, again, pilot safety is a must. Let's take care of the crew, let's take care of the mechanics, and let's take care of our pilots. And let us reduce or minimize the stress, especially when we are on high terrorism alert at any and all airports across the United States. So please, let us, again, reduce the stress, especially when we have to deal with the ATC, the air traffic control centers, and the pilots. They are under remarkable stress levels. So we have to, have to think about them. They have to know all the federal regulations, and they have to know state, city, and, and law enforcement regulations. It is not easy to be a pilot. And so I commend those, those dudes. They are awesome. They are incredible. So again, God bless the United States, and God bless our pilots and our military. Thank you. God bless Donald Trump.
Bye. Okay. Thank you. I have a motion.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. It is ten o'clock, I am.
Aram, please record a yes vote.
Design. Next item, please.
Eighty, Director of Public Works and Police Chief Regarding Tenant Improvements at Glendale Police Building. Eighty-one resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the director of Public Works or his designated to negotiate with one or more architectural and engineering design firms and one or more general contractors for tenant improvements at Glendale Police Building and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated contracts. Eighty-two, motion accepting federal funding in an amount of $150,000 for the tenant improvements at Glendale Police Building. Eighty-three, resolution of appropriation.
Mr. Ochoa?
Just very briefly, the, the buildout of these areas within the GPD building with our federal partners don't lend themselves to our traditional processes, and so we're asking for the dispense with competitive bidding, knowing that Mr. Gulanian will be working with a variety of firms to make sure we get the right price and that ultimately the DOJ will end up paying for this, because ultimately, it's their space.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move the item.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is eighty, City Manager Regarding Request from the Glendale City Council to Adopt Resolution to Establish a Glendale-Sister City Relationship with Bongun, Chungbuk Province, the Republic of South Korea. F-one, Resolution Establishing a Glendale-Sister City Program with Bongum, Chungbung Province, the Republic of South Korea.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Almost good morning, Mayor Devine, council members. Thank you very much for having us over tonight. I want to say, we have in the audience our president of our Glendale-Korean Sister City Association, Chang Lee. Should you have any questions when I'm done? But what this report seeks to do is take one of our four friendly cities and elevate that relationship to a sister city. As you know, friendly cities are relationships where we begin to court one another, if you will, with another city, get to know them, the council members. Our council members go there, they come here, we have culture exchanges with the hopes of becoming, eventually becoming a sister city with them. The city of Bong has, has reached that, that level. And so our Glendale-Sister City Association asked that this come forward. Last week at the council meeting, Mayor Devine asked that this be brought back, which was seconded. So we brought that back. And myself and Mr. Lee, who can answer any questions, feel that next week, when their mayor is here, there would be no better gift to welcome him with, is a new sister city agreement. And with that, I'd be open to any questions, as would Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chang Lee, for staying for all this time. I know it's, you're very happy about this. When is the signing going to be exactly? So we all know.
It's August 6th.
August 6th, at City Hall, right here.
Didn't we sign that already?
No, we haven't.
I thought Laura signed one, and then I signed one, and then...
Well...
That was not that?
Well, as you know...
Those were unofficial.
Mr. Najarian.
Those were letters of intent.
As, as you were there, there was much discussion with them, as we've had this relationship for four years now, since 2012. And, and over that time, the council and the community has built a relationship with Mayor Jung and the, the people of Bong. So this would be the official signing, should this pass tonight. And as I said, Mayor Jung will be in town next week. Should this pass, we would have that signed, that document signed next week.
Well, I'll move the item. I think four of us have been to Bong and seen what a wonderful place it is. It's agricultural, at the same time, it's very modern. Their, their school there is very impressive. Mayor Jung is, is a great leader for that region. And I think it's a wonderful idea for us to have full-blown sister city relations.
I agree. Mr. Chang?
Madam Mayor, I just want to add that, as you know, Mayor Jung has an energy that's...
Incredible.
I mean, he's, he's just enthusiastic and very supportive of the student exchange and, you know, and the programs, the, you know, he's even thinking about doing some other exchange programs between, to city governments. He is actually being honored, receiving Leadership Award and good form because of all the energy that he has, recognized by Korean-Americans here in Los Angeles on the August 8th. And I invite every one of you that, you know, you've been associated with Mayor Jung, to be at that event to congratulate him.
It is the Proud Korean Award, correct? Is that the name?
Proud Korean, yeah, Leadership Award.
Okay.
So the only, the only thing I want to raise, it's great that we're having the sister city relationships. It is a lot of hard work, both on our end, staff, mainly Dan Bell, Mr. Lee on your end coordinating. I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't get overextended and somehow collapse inward. Because I know as council members, we enjoy the fruits of your labor. As a city, we enjoy the recognition. And it's a lot of hard work. And let's, let's just not get too carried away in our, in our efforts, only because I know it's a lot of work, staff time. And I think it would be worse to have to cut back on sister cities than to, you know, be more judicious in our, growing our family. So that's just my general comment.
Najarian, if I can briefly. Yes, it, it can be at times, but there is, you know, fruitful relationships that are being built there in our international cities. But I would say, you know, Mr. Lee and I have been discussing, kind of putting some parameters on, on the, the nature of our association.
And it's not just, just Korea, but, and Korea is an example of what's working, but we have several sister cities from Mexico that are sort of waning, Japan waning. We heard some comments say about two of our sister cities in Armenia, so...
Yes, and...
Should we hire more staff to monitor this?
No.
Would you like an assistant?
No, I would not. I love this work. It's, it's good stuff, and Mr. Ochoa would never approve that. Look at him shaking his head. But I'll tell you, we do have...
That right there would be like flirting with disaster. You don't give a guy like him an assistant.
Outside of the Molly Hatchet reference there, we, we have eight sister cities. Like, as you said, some have kind of waned a little bit, some are new. We are very active with Dominican Republic right now.
That's right, I forgot. That's right, I forgot.
So we have, we have eight currently. We do periodically have visits from our sister city representatives in Mexico. We've had some exchanges of vehicles, old used vehicles there, as also the ambulances that had been sent to our Armenian sister city. So those relationships are there. It kind of ebb and flow of, of things that happen. And we are looking to rebuild our, our, our relationship with our Japanese sister city as we, we work with their consul general, as well as Kareem, and the Dominican consul general. So good fruitful relationships that I think will go for many years.
Our relationship with the Japanese sister cities have put us in a unique situation as international events unfold regarding certain issues.
I, I think so, but I think, you know, after a good fruitful discussion with staff of, of both sides, I think, I think we'll come out better.
I think we should plan a reunion tour with our Rosarita Beach sister city, because they have been ignored, they have gone through some hard times in the last 10 years through some of the violence. I know that they're very generous and would welcome us with open arms, so for a later date, just keep that in mind.
Mr. Oliver Ayers, we can reach out to him. Most certainly. Thank you.
And I just want to add, before I call the Speaker up, that we all know the mayor in Bowen, and we know how energetic he is and how positive he is, and I know that Chang Lee will work very hard with him on our relationship and our collaborations, and the, the possibilities are numerous. So I feel very good about, about this sister city. So I have a motion, but I also have a card, so thank you very much, gentlemen. Chinook Ramirez. One minute.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank my father, may he rest in peace. My father said while I was living in Japan, "Go to, go to Korea for this, for the Olympics." So I took my boat to the Olympics in Korea, and it was beautiful, it was lovely. The Korean people were truly very good to me. But what I remember most is when I was heading back to the Kimpo Airport, I was taking a taxi from the outskirts of Seoul, Korea, and all I could see was the fertile, lush, and sultry, dark, fresh smelling soil. It was so deep and green, the vegetation, that it just stood out with vibrant colors. The panoramic was spectacular, and the people were friendly, humble, and what surprised me most was the elderly Ja, the elderly Korean lady spoke Japanese, and they were Buddhists. That was incredibly also interesting. But the whole, the whole life in, in Korea was friendly, was charming, was jovial, and was just spectacular. I had a good time. Thank you very much to Korea.
Thank you. And I have a motion on the floor. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Proudly, yes. Welcome, Bowen as a sister city. Amaha Seiu. Next item, please.
The oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and reports. Madam Mayor, I do have five cards.
How many?
Five.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I am excused? I'm feeling a little under the weather. No, it's okay. Good night. Aram Manugian? I'm sorry?
Aram Manugian?
Oh, Manu, okay, yes.
I'll be right back.
I know. And I have old eyes, so you have to make sure...
Yeah, I know, it's quite all right.
Very clear.
Good evening, City Council, staff. My name is Aram Manugian. Some of you know me, probably most of you don't. I happen to know some of you personally. I'm a native of California, I was born in Pasadena, and I am kind of known in the community as a human rights activist and an investigative journalist. Today, I'm speaking to you again regarding an issue which was brought up earlier during the earlier discussions regarding the current situation in Armenia. And I'm not coming to you and addressing the Armenians here, I'm addressing the city, because there is a serious issue going on in your sister cities in Armenia. They are in crisis today, and unfortunately, very little press has been given. There has been protests in front of the Armenian consulate on the corner of Lexington and Central every night, starting at seven o'clock for the last week. We're in the tenth day of this crisis in Armenia. I'm not going to give you background on what happened, because you've already heard of that, and some of your, some of the councilmembers here already have been following all of this, and I would encourage everyone to find out and educate yourself on what's really going on there. I call on the city of Glendale as a city which prides itself in addressing human rights issues and honoring atrocities, as they've honored the Armenian genocide, they've honored the, the comfort women from World War II, and I would hope that the city of Glendale as a, a community which prides itself in human rights will stand up for the human rights of the citizens of Armenia, who also are found here in the city of Glendale in exile. They have left that country because of the condition that's going on today. Many of them are here not because they want to be here, because they see no other alternative. They would love to return back to Armenia. I know a lot of people in the, in Glendale complain about too many Armenians in the community. Well, if you want to get rid of the Armenians that are here, that don't want to be here and you find unpleasant, help them with their country and their condition so they can return. I myself am an investigative journalist, I'm in exile, I'm a survivor of seven attempts on my life while I was living in Armenia, by government officials, by mafiosos, and so on. Everybody knows the stuff that I write is quite potent and not well-received. And I would encourage you, instead of, I heard councilmembers, and I don't want to address you as Armenians, just as what you have, have stated saddens me that there's nothing we can do here. You're politicians, and it's politics that are, that are really pushing these issues and causing these problems, these human rights issues. You have a president which you have, have admitted to meeting with, who was clearly fraudulently elected. It was a rigged election. As you know, those of you, at least Zare and Ara know, I went on hunger strike in 2013, or 2013, following Serz Sarkizyan's fraudulent election. And again, I didn't hear and have support from our politicians here. Rather, they clapped and, and honor him and recognize him as an official, you know, the official president of Armenia, which very clearly he's not, and the actions that he's taken over the last ten days have proven that he is not a leader to be honored, but rather a leader to be shamed and to be called out on. I would encourage each of you individually to write a statement. I heard statements here, but those weren't official statements. The city of Glendale should be issuing an official statement. We have our sister cities that are, again, Rapan. The city of Rapan, the one that the, the communication between them in the last five years has kind of dwindled because of the, the governor of the region. Rapan has made a statement today that they stand by the revolutionaries that started this on the seventeenth, and that they are asking for the resignation of Serz Sarkizyan. I would suggest that you research that, because that is one of your sister cities. Furthermore, I am asking, I know Laura Friedman had to, had to leave, but I'm even calling on her to make a statement, because she is a councilmember for a city that has the largest Armenian population. I also call on Arti, who is running for the forty-third Assembly District, to make a statement. He's a politician at the end of the day, it all counts. Serz Tanqyan made a statement, a famous actress from Canada made a statement today. She actually stood in front of the rally and made a statement. I want to conclude by saying that come Friday, my colleagues and I are going to start a hunger strike in this, at the stairs in front of the City Hall here, until we have a response from the city, a positive response that represents who the city of Glendale is, and to show their human rights side of them, rather than lip service. Thank you very much.
Chinook Ramirez.
I passed a card. There's an Armenian mom-and-pop store that I enjoy going to. They are Armenians, and they cook my meals the way I love them, and I just enjoy their meals. They are at five zero nine East Broadway, Glendale, California, nine one two oh five. They are at the corner of...
Is this a commercial? No, no commercials.
Oh, no, no commercials. Oh, no, sorry. I just enjoy your, the business here. Thank you. Disastrously, Barack Obama has been, and his wicked surveillance program against legal-law-abiding citizens and U.S. military veterans have traumatized and tortured the consciousness of America. Moreover, Barack Obama and the FBI and the CIA have connivingly, deceitfully undermined and sabotaged America's image and competitiveness all over the world. I am delighted that he's finally leaving. If we went there, I'm sorry, if we went to these domestic and international terrorists, we want them disseminated, i.e. Hezbollah, Taliban, ISIS, jihadists, and Al Qaeda, and the Latino enemy combatant gangs, i.e. Mexican mafia and the Maras Salvatrucha. If we shut down the FBI and the CIA and give them the royal boot, again, these homicidal and pathological maniacs, then we will stop wreaking havoc not only in America, but all across the world. Yes, Donald Trump, el jefe, will not cheapen America, but usher sacred America to the apex before the world. He will bring back safety, security, protection, stability, privacy in all areas of our American existence. He will deport millions of criminal illegal Latino gangbangers back home. No amnesty, no asylum. He will demand that unlawful illegals, illegals who fraudulently got their residence and citizenship status, get it revoked and hence be deported. Donald Trump, el jefe, this fervent American patriotic business giant, will rebuild and realign our law enforcement to more efficiently provide successful and lasting public safety and reduce their stress level by reducing crimes permanently here in America. Strengthen and fortify our beloved United States military, and get our homeless and our impoverished veterans housed and treated and made whole and complete. And then he will restructure and make the VA accountable for each veteran warrior's well-being. And he will dismantle and vanish the rigged system that we have throughout America. He will give more freedoms, liberties to pilots who fly whether they are flying business and/or pleasure and reduce air costs. He will enforce the rule of law, and he will legally mandate attorneys and judges and U.S. justices of our Supreme Court, that, that includes Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Sotomayor, to adhere to the American jurisprudence when they analyze and interpret the law, that they must interpret the rule of law correctly. And remember, Abraham Lincoln admonished us to be vigilant against those who try to pervert the rule of law. So we must remove those who falsely or fraudulently pervert the rule of law. And secondly, I know that Donald Trump will mend all the infrastructure of the United States of America. He will make this country great again. He will make people's home, he will make people more at peace, there will be more harmony, and people will be able to be more neighborly, more, more free in their life and in their environment, and thus create a wonderful ambiance throughout this country. And again, this giant of a man loves women, respects women, and he loves his children as well as wanting to leave a legacy for America and for the future generations, that he changed the horridness, the criminal destruction of this country, because we are going fast down in a dismal abyss. And God bless this man who took the reins of destruction of this country and is making America great. I have faith that he will, he will restore this country and bring us back from this dismal abyss of destruction. And God bless our United States military, God bless our pilots, and bring happiness, joy, peace, love, and freedom, liberties, and the right to our properties and not be homeless for standing up for being a whistleblower and sleeping on the streets, because you chose to speak out and say something that they didn't like. God bless America. Thank you.
Christine Malagian.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for having me here. I really appreciate your time, but it's late evening, you're here and working for our community to make it great. I'm here for the same reason that all Armenians were here today, and they, in very details, explained what's really happening right now in Armenia. And I know that every Armenian right now struggles with the pain and struggles with the helplessness, and they don't know, they don't have any platforms to raise their voice. So you're their last hope. I'm so proud to see a lot of Armenian last names in here, Zare, Sinanian, Vartan, Karpetian, Ara Najarian. You're very well-respected people in this community, and our Armenian community voted for you and put their trust in you to be represented well. However, I don't see them represented well in here. For, when I heard you, what you're saying, you basically said you're basically helpless. If you are the politicians of the, one of the greatest countries, that is an advocate for human rights and democracy, and you feel helpless, how do you want us to feel? What we need to do, if you are feeling helpless? You said, Zare, Sinanian, Sinanian, that if Lyska is in the sister city and you cannot do anything, are you forgive me to ask you, are you feeling helpless or, God forbid, scared of Lyska? Why can't you make statements officially how you feel about it? You're not only American politicians who advocate for human rights, you're also Armenians. How do you feel personally about it? Why won't you raise your voice? Because things that's really going on in Armenia is beyond human, right? What they do with these people, do you know that there are four hundred people kidnapped right now? Do you know that they don't know, where are they? Do you know how many people, how many hundreds of them are beaten in the, in the KBG, that's how I call them, and how many, how many fingernails are taken away from their fingers? Do you know that? Do you know that they discharge blood right now because they're beaten for their kidney that much? It is beyond human. When in Kenya, girls were kidnapped, our president stood up and said, "Bring out our girls back." We went to Syria, we went to Iraq, we went to Ukraine for human rights. We wanted them to have freedom. We were there for them. Why not Armenia? Why is this double standards? Why are we feeling helpless in that country? What's the problem? Maybe you can, you know, explain that to us, and we can understand, because at this point, we are voting for you to represent us, and we don't feel that we are represented well. So there are a lot of opinions already heard, and we know that you are aware of this, and I will really appreciate if, if I will have your word, that you're going to investigate it even more, and you will give your official statement to the government of Armenia, to the city, to the Lyska, to the city, sister cities of Glendale, and you will, you will condemn the police brutality, the government corruption, as a politician and as an Armenian. And as my fellow, Aram Manugian, said, I'm going to go to hunger strike too, on these stairs in the Glendale City, as soon, as much as it's going to take. You have until Thursday to issue that political statement, or on Friday, you're going to see our faces every single day here on the stairs. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Grant Michaels.
Good evening, once again, City Council people. I've been here all day. I think lunch, dinner, now we have to have a midnight snack, maybe breakfast in the morning.
Margaret, are you buying? Are you buying?
Hmm?
Are you buying?
Sure, why not? An honor, thank you. You do a great job. You know, people don't realize, I mean, I know all of you outside of here, and, you know, you have lives to live, and you're doing a duty almost like a, it's actually a volunteer duty, but people don't realize that. And, you know, you go through a lot and have to listen to a lot and take a lot of abuse. I wouldn't do it. I, I mean, there's no way I could put up with it, let me tell you. My Irish wouldn't stand for it. But anyway, one of the things that people say to me, Margaret, give the number for the bulky item. Eight one eight, five four eight, three nine one six. And the reason that I stayed this long is because my area, on Cypress alone, from Glendale up to, well, Boynton, maybe up to Oak Ridge, I mean, there must be five piles of furniture. And on Boynton itself, by the time I go down to Palmer, there's another load of furniture. I mean, you could furnish an apartment. I'm not kidding you. Really? There's so much stuff there, and I don't know why, and it's been there for a couple weeks. I'm not just talking yesterday, I'm talking a couple weeks. And I don't know why people won't phone, because it's surely one way of becoming a blighted area. When you've got all that trash laying around on the streets, and then people come and go through it and break it up, and cushions off the couch are thrown around on the, you know, on the right-of-way, it's not good. And you know that for an area, when people come into it and see all that, it really makes the value of your property go down. They think, who wants to live in an area like this? As you well know, having lived there, that when all these things go on, they look down their noses at us. So I would appreciate it if we could have some bulky item picks, pickups. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night, Margaret. I, I have a question, Mr. Lansafame. Is there any way that we can do some sort of outreach to our residents about placing bulky items on the streets and how they can get picked up, or what this number is? I can, now for two days, and I've reported this, coming from Fairview on Jackson down to City Hall, three sofas plus trash, and they're still sitting there, and that one sofa's been there for a week. So Margaret, I understand your frustration. It happens to all of us. But is there some sort of, something that we can do, besides Margaret coming here every week and giving that number, to, to... besides Margaret coming here every week and giving that number to alert residents? And, you know, should I tell this? Yasmin, Ms. Beers and I were driving around last week on, I can't remember what street it was, a little further north. And a young girl just came out with a bag of trash and dumped it right on the, right on the grass. And so we stopped, and Ms. Beers said, "Excuse me, but don't you have a trash can for that?" And she just looked and Yasmin said, "You know, you should put that in your trash can." And she looked at her mother and said, "Do you think I should do that?" She said, "The city's going to pick it up." "The city's going to pick it up." And Yasmin, Ms. Beers, said, "No, the city doesn't pick up plastic bags of trash." So there's something that has to be done to educate or to outreach our community residents so that they know that there is a number they can call. And also the fact that, you know, they don't have to do that. They shouldn't be dumping trash on the street. Any response?
Madam Mayor, Member City Council, I was actually texting back and forth with Ms. Beers because I do receive on a regular basis texts from Ms. Beers when she drives around town. Needless to say, we have increased our outreach. It was as of last week that we have our GTV6 created, PSAs both in Armenian and Spanish languages. We have, we advertise our number, we, notification in the Public Works newsletter and City Connection. We have a YouTube video that has been shown around the media. We share it on Facebook, on Twitter.
Do you ever put it in the utility bills?
It's in the utility bills. But we also have supplemented our own crews, our pickup crews with a private contractor who sweeps these problem areas on a regular basis.
When you say regular, what's regular?
The private contractor we hired at the end of April as part of our spring cleaning. And the problem areas are essentially South Glendale and West Glendale, North, Southwest Glendale. And we have these areas identified. So in addition to our own crews picking up on trash pickup days, the private contractor does it every day within those areas. And the $50,000 contract lapsed in a matter of three weeks. But we have been able to collect twice as much as we did within that time period as last year, over 200 tons, which is incredible. So, but we are working with the police department also to come up with some enforcement mechanism that will be the stick as opposed to the carrot. We are doing everything we can. And council approved as part of the current fiscal year budget hiring of another crew member who will be in addition. So instead of one pickup truck, we'll have two with a new driver. So that will double up on our crews. So hopefully, we can manage to pick up additional abandoned items.
It's like that scene from Alice's Restaurant.
What scene is that?
You know that scene. Did you ever see that movie?
Councilmember Karbetyan has a question.
So if I have a bulky item, I have to call a few days in advance, and it has to be put out on the day that my trash is being picked up. Am I correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
And also, if I see something on the street, do we still have that option to take a picture with my Glendale app and it goes directly to Public Works? And you will have it on your list of items that has to be picked up? Is that, that option--
Yes, Councilmember Karbetyan. It will be routed to Public Works.
I think that's the easiest and most efficient way of doing it because when you call, you get, you know, you're put on hold and you have to spell your name three times and repeat. But I think if you have that Glendale app, I think we need to advertise that and push that as much as we can. So you can just take a picture. You don't have to do anything else. With your Glendale app, take a picture and it goes directly to the Public Works, and they know where the items are and will be picked up.
Because you know you are absolutely right. I am seeing it so much more often than I used to see it. So people are just dumping--
If it's a furniture, it's a good sign. It means people are buying new furniture.
Economically.
They're bringing the old furniture out, but, you know.
Economically, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.-- No more cards. Next item, please.
There's one more card, Madam Mayor, Grant Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry, Grant. Oh, because I put you in the pile. So sorry. And you waited all this time.
Not a problem. Good evening, mayor, council staff. I'm Grant Michaels. While I wear many hats, I'm here tonight speaking as an individual. I attended tonight primarily to listen to the discussion about the South Glendale Plan as well as all of the other issues presented. I didn't plan to speak, but I do see the South Glendale Plan as a community plan of the city. Even though I do live in North Glendale, I do have an interest in the South Glendale Plan. With wearing the hat of the president of the Homeowners Coordinating Council, certainly, we will be involved in the outreach. We will work and assist with that. Working with the Montrose Neighborhood Association, others that were active in the North Glendale Community Plan. There are lessons learned from the North Glendale Community Plan that we want to make sure get included in the South Glendale Plan. I'm sure listening to those delegates from the east and west areas of the city, they are looking forward to a community plan that will be effective in their area. Wearing a hat as the Parks Commissioner. Clearly, the Parks Commission has an interest in the South Glendale Plan specifically of how it relates to parks. One thing the outreach is missing is an aspect of collaboration. You heard many people come here this evening and speak, active in the neighborhood associations, other commissioners, residents. The collaboration, if you simply collect outreach from all of those individual stakeholders, you miss that operation, that option of collaboration. If Alec, who spoke tonight, is on the Transportation and Parking Commission, if I am sitting on the Parks Commission, we each would be discussing the South Glendale Plan at our respective commissions. We would not have the opportunity to collaborate with each other and discuss possible options. The formation of a committee or a task force, like was done with the North Glendale Plan, did allow that level of collaboration. If the committee isn't to be formed, I would encourage first, looking into the option of forming a committee. You heard tonight and the other two meetings, many people who would be interested in working with the city to collaborate and come up with new ideas. If not, I would encourage holding community meetings on specific topics where collaboration could occur, allowing people to talk in a more constructive fashion rather than a couple of minutes to express a comment or provide feedback. Thank you.
You're talking about kind of an workshop atmosphere, which can be accomplished, I think, in the outreach, and hopefully, that will happen. I think that's what we are kind of planning on and really hoping that we get information in that manner.
That's what I'm looking to encourage.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
New business.
We have new business, Madam Mayor.
New business, Councilmember Sinanian.
I move that the claim for damages of petroleum properties LLC be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $45,490.75. And the same is hereby approved and accepted. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of claimant of release.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman. Karbetyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes.
And Councilmember Najarian.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the matter entitled Mob Cessian versus City of Glendale, Superior Court Case Number BC565350, be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $25,000. And the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the plaintiff of release and dismissal with prejudice.
Second.
Councilmember Friedman.
Second. I was the second.
Second.
Councilmember Friedman. Karbetyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Good night.